All right, we're gonna call the February nineteenth City Council meeting in order. Commissioner Smith, if you give us the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day, please, sir.
Let's assume the attitude of prayer. Most gracious, oh my God, our Father, we come once again, grateful for this opportunity to be in your presence. We thank you, God, for the opportunity to serve as servants of this city. We ask you continue to lead, guide, and direct us as we continue. God do us things in the best interest of our citizens. Bless all those together here tonight, in thy son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fact of the day, on February the nineteenth nineteen forty-five, Operation Detachment, the US Marines invasion of Iowa Gemma is launched. Iowa Gemma was a barren Pacific island guarded by Japanese artillery. But to the American military, it was pivotal for plans to launch bombing raids against Japan. Only six hundred sixty miles away. By evening, more than five hundred fifty Marines were dead and more than one thousand eight hundred were wounded. The capture of Mount Suburra, the highest point of the island, invested the Japanese defense, took four more days and many more casualties. When the American flag was finally raised on Iowa Gemma, the memorial image was captured in a famous photograph that was later won at the press surprise. Fact of the day.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. All right, approval of the minutes. Looking for unless any changes, if not, look for a motion to approve the council minutes of February fifth two thousand twenty-five. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Jacob, any changes to the agenda? Okay, all right. Next up, proclamation, Future Farmers of America. I know that Commissioner Smith knows a little something about that. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and read the proclamation. Then I'm gonna have Hayden Scalise come up, representing the FFA collectively. And then what we'll do is we'll get pictures each school one at a time. And so we got our famous photographer here to take those for us. So let me go ahead and read the proclamation. And then we will start with some of the pictures here. Okay. And it states, whereas the Future Farmers of America, FFA, and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and future of the food, fiber, and natural resources systems. And whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members. And whereas agricultural education and the FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demand in the science, business, and technology of agricultural education. And whereas the FFA motto, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve, gives direction and purpose to these students who take an active role in making the connection between agriculture, education. And whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. And whereas the FFA chapters have been very active in the Apopka area and have made many contributions to school and community life. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, by the virtue vested in me by the City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim February fifteenth through February twenty-second two thousand twenty-five as Future Farmers of America Week. So congratulations. All right, Hayden?
It should be a... Oh, there you go. Hello? Okay, there you go.
You can move the mic up. There you go.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the fourth day of the National FFA Week. I am Hayden Scalise, and I am the current president of the Wakava High School FFA chapter. For those who do not know, FFA is a national organization focused on providing enhanced agricultural education to students between the sixth and twelfth grades. This topic includes everything from livestock animals to plants and overall employment and business skills to help prepare you for a career in the future. So with that explanation, I bet some of you are asking, what is so important about National FFA Week, anyway? Well, for starters, it helps us accomplish one of the many goals of our students and our organization, that being agriculture advocacy. This week helps bring attention to our efforts to advocate for the future of agriculture and for policies that ensure sustainability. It also provides a significant fundraising event for our organization, with it last year receiving close to one point five million dollars in Give FFA Day alone. This money fundraised is then used to help fund grants that allow students to get started on their supervised agricultural education projects. The Gift of Blue, which helps tens of thousands of in-need FFA members receive their jackets for free, and the various events and competitions that we use to further our knowledge and relevant career skills. So I'd like to thank the City of Apopka for affirming a week that is so important and critical to our organization so we can ensure the future of agriculture is bright. Thank you.
Before we get the pictures, I think Commissioner Smith, I think you might have a word or two to say about FFA and yours. And you got, I think, your sidekicks here, you might wanna recognize him as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, after being an agricultural advisor in the FFA for forty years and then retiring from one kind of public schools and working very closely with my dear friend, Mr. John Clorin, whom we now have a nonprofit called Two Peaks in the Park, where we still do agricultural projects with students, both in elementary and high school and with seniors. And it just was a couple of years ago that I wore one of those blue and gold jackets. And and so I'm proud to see that FFA is still growing strong, and we're glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. All right, in alphabetical order, Apopka High School, if all the students from Apopka High School come down, we'll grab a picture. All right, unless the FFA are... We've got a packed house out there willing to come in, so if we can, we'll let y'all exit if that's okay. Trying to get room for... We got a couple other... Yeah, you bet. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Bye-bye.
My name.
Good night.
Can I?
Get home safe.
Yeah, I don't want the fire marshal there in the back of the room to get on to here, so. All right. So next up, we've got proclamation for Black History Month. And so something we started three years ago, I hope Francina's...
She's up here.
Okay, let's just wait just a minute, get the folks in that are part of that celebration as well. Hopefully, we got enough room for everybody. There she is. Francina, you need to be out front and center here. Yes, yes, you're front and center. Awesome, thank you. Mark, how we doing? Is that it, Mark? Oh, awesome. Okay, super. Well, we got room. Okay, that's great. Okay. Well, thanks, everybody, for coming out. We, this is our third year that we're doing this. We've got an event next Tuesday that we're so excited about, it's Black History Month. And so one of the things I challenged Stephen and his team several years ago when we first started this event was we, there's plenty of black history about our national and international leaders. And I said, you know what? Why don't we look at, you know, our local leaders, black leaders, and let's recognize those? Because, you know, we've got a historian that knows everybody. And so we figure we better get her while we can. And so what we've done is we've had three years of black leaders here in Apopka, in the Apopka area, that we recognize. This will be our third year. And so we couple that with our Apopka Youth Council that have really worked hard, along with Francina Boykin, to make this happen. So we're so excited that she's been a part of that because we don't know how many years more we can keep her working on this project, but hopefully a long, long time. But anyway, so what I want to do is I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then I'm gonna have, where's Stephen? Where's Steve? Okay, or Stephen, you wanna go ahead and? Yeah, let's do that, and then I'll read the proclamation after the presentation. I think that'd be great, so, super.
All right, well, good evening. My name is Stephen Cribb. I do special projects here with the city. And I am delighted to introduce the Apopka Youth Council for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. They've worked really hard on collaborating this booklet along with Ms. Francina Boykin. I have a copy of it here. They will be available for sale at the event on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. And I could stand up here and talk to you, but I figured you all would much rather hear from the youth councils. So they are prepared and ready to go, and we're gonna start with Hunter, and he'll start us off for the presentation.
Okay, I'm not that tall, so I'm gonna move this down. Good evening, Apopka City Council and fellow Apopkins. I'm Hunter Yarrow, and I'm here with the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Apopka Youth Council. And we would like to thank you for the opportunity to invite you all out to next week's city, or celebrating Apopka Legends event, and to share more about the program.
Well, a very good evening, everyone. My name is Sprock. I'm from Apopka High School, and I'm here to talk about some of the background of our project. First off, the Legends of Apopka Project began in two thousand twenty-two when Mayor Nelson asked the Apopka Youth Council to put together a booklet that would honor African-Americans who had left a special impact on our local community. Twenty-eight names were chosen, one for each day of the month in February. The Youth Council worked with the Apopka Museum and produced the first volume in February two thousand twenty-three. All proceeds from the sales of the booklet went to the Apopka Museum. After a positive response in the first edition of the booklet, the second volume was produced in two thousand twenty-four. This booklet added twenty-nine names of the legends family, as two thousand twenty-four was a leap year, so there was twenty-nine days in February. Again, this initiative was taken on by the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Apopka Youth Council, who partnered with historian Ms. Francine Boykin. Sales from the second volume raised thirteen thirty... Sorry, one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars for that museum expansion fund. In addition to this booklet, the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Youth Council also hosted the Celebrating Apopka's Legend event to recognize the lives and families of the new legends being added to the book. There were almost four hundred people in attendance. This year, with the help of Ms. Francine Boykin and our sponsor Advent Health, the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Apopka Youth Council has produced a third volume of Celebrating Legends of Apopka for two thousand twenty-five. And we'll be hosting the event on February twenty-fifth to honor these new twenty-eight legends.
Hi, everyone. My name is August Rice. I'm from Apopka High School, and I will be answering the questions of what a legend is and how they're selected. Here you'll see a list of legends from two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. Our Youth Council partnered with local historian and Apopka Historical Society Vice President Francina Boykin to ensure those selected met the following criteria. Service: Did this legend use their gifts and talents to service other community members? Contributions: In what way were their gifts and talents used? These legends committed time, money, and any other resources they had to the strengthening of Apopka and surrounding areas. In some cases, a legend may not have had much to give at all other than their love for fellow Apopkins and was still able to leave a positive impact on the community. Impact: These are people well-known in Apopka and surrounding areas. Their legacy helped shape the culture of our community. They were often trailblazers, and some of her legends have even received national recognition. Residency: It is important that Apopka's legends were at some point Apopkins. Deceased: We wanted to ensure that although there are great people doing great things in our community now, it's important that those no longer with us receive recognition. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Olivia Hodge, and I'm representing Apopka High School on this extraordinary council. And now, the process. Apopka Youth Council began this project shortly after our very first meeting, five months ago. We would like to thank Ms. Francina Boykin for being our guide throughout the entire selection process, as well as reviewing all of our submittals. She was our mentor through this process. We've had four meetings lasting two hours each in which we looked over obituaries, yearbooks, news articles, and other historical documents from the Apopka Museum. Aside from these meetings, each of us eagerly did research on our own as well. And in the final meetings, we collaborated all of our biographies and images to send to publication.
Two thousand twenty-five legends. This slide highlights the result of all our hard work and research. We look forward to sharing more in depth how each name and picture here left an impact on our community at our special event taking place on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Hello, I'm Sophia Powell, and I'm here to invite you to our event. The two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Apopka Youth Council, in partnership with our sponsor Advent Health, would now like to formally invite you to the Celebrating Apopka Legends event. The event will take place Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, from six to eight p.m. It will take place at the Apopka Community Center at five nineteen South Central Avenue, Apopka, Florida. During this time, we will have a proclamation read by Mayor Nelson, music by Mark Amberon Wright and Wakava High School, and there will be a special reading of the volume three of the Celebrating Apopka Legends booklet. The Celebrating Apopka's Legends booklet will also be available for purchase for ten dollars. These are cash only. Prior years' booklets will also be available for purchase. Thank you, and we'll look forward to seeing you at the Celebrating Apopka's Legends event.
Thank you. That it, Stephen? Yeah, okay, awesome. Well, boy, you can see the hard work, and so everybody got a chance, please come out Tuesday night. They've worked really hard and with the help of Ms. Francina Boykin to make this a memorable event. So I want to go ahead and read the proclamation. And the proclamation reads, whereas February is Black History Month, an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans in a time for recognizing their central role in US history. And whereas the origins of Black History Month began in nineteen fifteen with historian Carter G. Woodson and minister Jesse E. Moreland. That year, they founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, an association dedicated to researching and promoting achievements by black Americans. The organization later became known as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas in nineteen twenty-six, the Association started the National Negro History Week and chose the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass as a week to commemorate achievements by the African-American community. And whereas through the efforts of Woodson and Moreland, schools, communities, and colleges organized local celebrations, as well as history clubs and performances. In the decades following this historic week, the event grew and evolved into what eventually became known as Black History Month. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, President Ford officially recognized Black History Month, and since then, every American president has designated February as Black History Month with a specific theme. For two thousand twenty-five, the theme is African-American and Labor. And whereas the City of Apopka is celebrating Black History Month with a booklet honoring twenty-eight local African-American citizens. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, by the virtue vested in me, do hereby proclaim February two thousand twenty-five as Black History Month here in the City of Apopka. Youth Council, I'm gonna grab a picture with y'all. And Francina? Thanks, Apopka Youth Council. Thanks, Stephen, and thanks Francina for all your hard work making that event happen. And we will also have these books will be available at the front desk as well. Does she have them yet?
She doesn't have them yet.
Okay, so tomorrow we'll have booklets, if you want to get them right here at the receptionist at City Hall as well. So please come out and grab a book. All right, next up, Bradley Williams, Park and Rec Project Update.
Good evening, Bradley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you all know, we have quite a few projects, capital projects moving through the system right now and a lot upcoming. So I thought it'd be a good opportunity to kind of take a break, come to council, give an update on where we stand on those projects. First up, we have our Apopka Action Sports Park. This is a community redevelopment re... I'm sorry, Community Redevelopment Agency project. It was budgeted at a CRA for five hundred thousand dollars. It's approximately nine thousand square feet of new park space, includes a street skate course and a pump track course, and has direct connection to the West Orange Trail. Some good news here, I put anticipated completion in mid-March. They actually are tidying up and wrapping up the construction this week. We'll do a final closeout with them next week, the construction company. And we'll be looking to send out an invite and advertise for a grand opening mid-March to really open the park for the community, so. Here's some pictures of the construction process. They have moved at a very fast clip getting the park in place. And we really do think that this is gonna be a good asset and a very heavily used new park for the community. Next up, another Community Redevelopment Agency project, the Downtown Apopka Trail Phase One. This project kicked off December twelfth of last year, budgeted at a little over one point one million dollars. It's approximately a one point one mile trail addition to the area there. Provides an Alonzo Williams Park connection with this trail. And the anticipated completion date is April two thousand twenty-five. They are moving well, the construction company is moving well with this project as well. If you look, phase one on this map is the purple, green, and blue. That makes up the approximately one point one mile trail. As this completes, we are in the process of finalizing a design for phase two of the trail. So we may be coming forward, depending on the CRA funding that's left in that budget, to go ahead and get that process out to bid and kicked off as well. Just some update pictures from that. Since these pictures were taken, some sod was laid down. This is behind Alonzo Williams Park. So it really did a nice job cleaning up. So it really did, did a nice job cleaning up that alleyway and converting it into a nice paved trail. Our Northwest Recreation Complex Inclusive Playground. Uh, this project kicked off on January twenty-fourth of this year. It's gonna be a little over thirteen thousand square foot play space. It's replacing the old equipment, uh, that was in the location. Uh, amenities include, uh, they call them go rounds. It's these merry-go-round style structures that, uh, are flat level ground. So it is accessible for anybody to get in and out of them. Uh, Zip Cruise, which is right over here. A, um, zip line style play structure. Again, it'll have an ADA, uh, accessible, uh, version. Uh, two new play structures that include some overhead shade. And the great, uh, great part about this location that was selected where the old playground was, we able to keep a lot of the shade from the tree canopy that's out there. So the, the park will have a lot of natural shade as well, which, which will be very nice. Uh, latest update on this is, uh, anticipated completion date of April twenty twenty-five. There's another look at the Zip Cruise, uh, feature. And then just some, uh, shots at the bottom there. The old equipment has already been removed. The site has been graded and we, we expect the play structures to start coming out of the ground next week. So we'll see some action move in there above ground next week. And, uh, in kind of tandem with that project, we are currently out to bid for the relief exit driveway and parking additions, which will kind of encompass the new playground. Uh, won't really speak too much on that right now since we are in an open solicitation for that, but that project is coming. The plan is to try and get that project underway towards the end of the playground construction. And then do a great grand opening, uh, once the roadway is in. But the playground will open as soon as it's, uh, completed. This contractor will make sure the site is secured for the roadway. Also Northwest Rec, we have our multipurpose fields. Currently reviewing quotes from the two awarded contractors that we have now under contract. Uh, it's gonna add approximately nine hundred eighty thousand square feet of, uh, plain surface, which equates to about six, uh, of the large soccer pads. And we're anticipating a couple of completion dates here. And really the difference is a couple of the fields we're looking to sod, which will allow us to play on them a lot sooner. The rest of the fields will look to do a process called springing, which basically you take some grass clippings and some, uh, roots from the, the turf, spread it across the area and grow your field in. So that takes a little bit more time, so that, looking like a spring of next year finishing that. Uh, our tennis and pickleball facility. Um, we're continuing through the design process with the contractor. This will bring ten pickleball and ten tennis courts to the area, including court lights, sidewalks, some ADA parking. The uh, location here, uh, we have Brush Drive and Jason Dwelly. We've situated the courts towards the southern side of the property, closest to the fire station. Um, again, just to kind of keep as much buffer from our neighbors to the north. And keep the activity for the park, uh, towards the, the southern part of the parcel. We did send out letters to, um, the neighbors within a five hundred foot radius that had this plan. Also had contact information for our office. If there's any questions, concerns, comments, as we continue to move through the design process, uh, we'll certainly work with, uh, with our neighbors to, uh, try and address any of those issues that might come up. But we're excited. We, I routinely get emails from, from residents and people in the community that are looking for pickleball courts. So this would be a good addition for the city. And also tennis, tennis, the four courts that we have at Northwest are, are constantly used. So excited to get this project, uh, continued through the process. Uh, Kitlet, Kitlet and Nelson Park Gazebre replacement. We've ordered the structure and our architect is working on the final design of the platform stage that will go along with this. We're looking at a forty foot by about eighteen foot, uh, structure to replace the gazebo. It'll go in a little bit different location of the park. If you recall the stage that we brought out for the holiday tree light up, that location, it'll be in that approximate area, opens up the park for a large event space, grass area, for a platform stage, uh, uh, structure. Uh, we're anticipating, uh, this to be a summer project. So we'll clear through some of the spring events that are coming into the park and, and aim for summer construction on that project. A couple of ongoing cemetery projects that we're working on. We have our maintenance storage, uh, building. Uh, architecture design is wrapping up on that. We need to complete some civil engineering. Uh, this is a, a funded project already through our current budget. Colimbarium upgrades, we have our two new columbariums are, uh, pending delivery. So we should have those here shortly, uh, to, to, uh, fill out our four total columbariums. We have a new gazebo, uh, that we are pending order with our, uh, gazebo company. And then we'll be, once the gazebo is installed, we'll be moving to put the pav, uh, paved patio and sidewalks in to provide access to that area. And then we'll do some additional landscaping around, uh, around that area. Additionally, we've ordered, uh, cemetery entrance gates, some automatic entry and exit gates at the cemetery for both, uh, both entrances. Uh, that'll allow the park to be open and closed at dawn and dusk, um, seven days a week. Which will be, uh, a good, good upgrade for the cemetery. And finally, uh, update on our T D T grant. We, uh, we received the grant award, uh, end of last year. Uh, we were waiting on the funding agreement. We did receive that from the county. Uh, we reviewed it. Uh, Cliff's office has reviewed it. Uh, we're finishing some internal reviews with staff, with finance and city administrator's office. We're hoping to possibly have that back to council at the next meeting for review and approval. And then it'll go back to county, uh, for their final approval. Once that's completed, we'll be able to proceed with, uh, kicking off the project. Just a reminder, we have two project areas. The, the total project, uh, grant scope is for thirteen point one million dollars, including amphitheater upgrades and softball fields. Project area one is our new softball quad, which will bring four new softball fields, restrooms, concessions, a maintenance building, ADA and grass parking. And then of course, all the walkways and dugouts, uh, needed for the softball fields. And project area two is the amphitheater upgrades. We're looking at adding a new ticket booth and restroom complex, a new concession restroom complex, and upper walkway, uh, which is that yellow walkway there, along with some vendor and food truck areas at the top of the hill. Uh, again, to provide better access for everybody to get up the hill. Uh, a lot of our, a lot of our events do utilize that space currently for vendors. And right now you'd have to go up through the grass to get to it. Additional ADA parking and ADA seating, an expanded loading dock. Uh, we're looking to relocate the sound pad back a little bit further to improve the views on the hill. And, uh, a new access road at the top of the hill and some fencing and handrails throughout the, uh, the actual seated area of the structure. And these are just a couple of the renderings that, that we put together for the grant application. Just kind of highlighting the, uh, ticket booth. We'd, we'd look to match the same style and, and, um, architecture that's currently out there at the, at the amphitheater, so. With that, that's all I have. I take questions or?
Any questions for Bradley? Got a lot of stuff going on, man. I don't know how you do it. You got a, got a great team, Bill, to put all this, pull this all together and, huh, in a short, oof, six to nine months, most of this will be completed.
Yeah, we have a lot going. Um, Chris Richter has, uh, we've kind of reassigned some roles and he's helping a lot with the, the special projects now in the departments as we have such a large list. Um, so he's been a great help to the, uh, the effort here. And yeah, we're excited. This is, this is a lot of fun. It's, uh, it's always exciting to bring new facilities to the community. And I think we have some very valuable amenities coming that the community is going to enjoy.
I had a couple of questions and we spoke about this during a gender view. Uh, it's one, the fencing at the cemetery, it's been an ongoing kind of on social media. And we spoke about that. It's something we are taking care of at this point. It's on the calendar?
Yes, so the, the small section of the vinyl fencing, that actually was replaced, was fixed this week.
Okay.
So that's done. There was some miscommunication between myself, my staff, and the contractor. We had some other fencing that was going on at the same time and, and a little, that portion kind of got left out.
What's it gonna take care of now or it's done?
It's done.
Okay.
That's done. We did have another section of fence that was brand new that got hit by a car last week. So we're in the process of getting that repaired. It's been filed with risk as well, but that will get repaired and then we'll, we'll try and go through insurance to get that, that recouped.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Any other questions for Bradley? All right, thank you, Bradley, appreciate it. Great, great presentation. All right, Bobby, come on down and tell us about Station Street.
Good evening, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Uh, the representatives of the Station Street Development are here tonight, uh, Peacock Capital. They will give a presentation on the Station Street property, project and an overview of it. So with that, I will turn it over to Representatives with Peacock Capital.
Thank you, Bobby.
Okay, so that's good, that's cool, thanks so much.
Hi, Ken Paul Snell, my partner, Jason Schaller. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, appreciate you allowing us to take a few minutes to give you a quick update on where we are, uh, today on the Station Street project. We're, uh, beyond thrilled to be working with the city and excited about, uh, the feedback that we've got from Bobby and his team. And they've been, been very supportive and very good to work with in terms of navigating the process so far. So we'd like to at least walk you through, first of all, the conceptual site plan, what the overall layout looks like, uh, and then walk you through some of the specific, uh, uh, amenities and then the actual, uh, interior finishes on the apartments. And then open it up to any questions you may have about, uh, the project in terms of where it is. First scene you see is the, is the wider shot of the area. Um, obviously you guys are all familiar with it, but it kind of gives you an overlay of where the two apartment, uh, buildings are gonna fit, where the parking is, and then how that incorporates with the common area space and how the common area space ties into everything else that's going on downtown. Particularly, uh, what we heard earlier on the trail, which we're, uh, beyond thrilled with, uh, that element and having that connected to this project as well. Here's a little bit more of a close up to give you a little bit more of a perspective, uh, up close in terms of the layout of the different buildings and the orientation. This is, uh, an elevation. Direction this would be from. This is from the backside, so you'd be seeing that on the, on the backside. You can see the parking lot from, uh, that side, so the northwest side. And then here's the front elevation of the building. You'll see we've got space for a mural. It's just conceptual right now. We're obviously incorporating orchids, given that we're in Apopka for today. But we know that in talking with staff and talking with some other community members downtown, there may be some other ideas or themes for that mural downtown. So we're, we're not proposing this as a final rendition, but just an idea of what can be done to en- enhance the community and add some, uh, features to the community. And then you get into the common area space, the general public stage area. My, my business partner here, in addition to being an amazing real estate executive, also happens to be a genuine rock star. So if you want to download him on Spotify or Apple Music, you can do that. So he's worked with, uh, the, uh, musical community to design and, and work on some of the stage area and the way that lays out. So you can see it's wide open, uh, accessible, connects to the broader area. And then the, uh, the tower that we talked through the last time that the city, uh, wanted incorporated to give some focal point and some element to drive, uh, drive things down there. Just restaurants, you can see how they fit kind of aesthetically. And do you want to walk them through the interiors of the building, Stephen? Or do you want to go back and talk about the layout of the building? Whoops. We'll go this way.
Wrong way.
Sorry. This is why they normally don't give me clickers, I apologize.
Yeah, you're going, you're going wrong way, you're going wrong way. Bobby wants you to help me out.
Sorry. How about this?
You're getting there.
Hey.
Okay.
You want to talk about the site and then we'll go to the building?
Yeah. Uh, so they're one and two bedroom apartments. Uh, the one bedroom apartments, uh, are very spacious. They have washer dryer in, in home laundry. The two bedroom apartments are two bedroom, two baths, fully split floor plan, which is very, uh, great. It's a great floor plan actually, because if you are a single person that has an office at home, or if you are a couple, or if you're, uh, a parent that has, or parents that have children, it's a versatile floor plan. We've got a thirty unit building and a twenty-four unit building. And the two bedrooms kind of like an accordion sandwich, the one bedroom's in the middle. Uh, the balconies on the back of all these buildings will look out over the common space. So if you have a concert or an event happening in the common space at night, the residents will be able to enjoy that from their balconies. Uh, we do have, uh, food truck staging set up, uh, as well, uh, to accommodate local food vendors and those who are interested in participating in downtown events. Uh, the building itself, uh, you want to skip maybe to the interiors? Yeah. The, the way we design our buildings and, and the way that we think about this, it truly accommodates workforce and workforce housing. But the luxury finishes on the interior are that, uh, similar to what you would see inside of a Class A apartment building. Um, the cabinets are all solid plywood cabinets. Uh, the flooring is a special customized flooring that we manufacture and ship from overseas. We have timeless finishes, tall ceilings. There are L E D recessed lights that are in all the ceilings, so it's nice and bright inside. And we have very big windows that the residents will enjoy. Uh, you know, taking in the surroundings in the downtown area and all the beauty that Apopka has to offer. And if anybody would like to take a walk through any of the apartments, if you take out your cell phone, you can actually scan that Q R code that you see here on the screen. And that'll take you on a virtual walkthrough of the apartments. What you're gonna see here is not the actual, um, Station Street development, but another development that we were building in Gainesville, Florida. Uh, but the apartment interiors never change. So what you're able to see there, if you click, you're gonna scroll around and you're gonna be able to see the development itself. And then you can click on a one or a two bedroom and you can go inside and you can do a virtual walkthrough of the actual apartment itself. Uh, this will be great when it comes to leasing up this building, because what we'll do is people can actually put on V R goggles if they want to get that sophisticated. Or if you're just sitting at home having a glass of wine at night with your family, you can sit on the couch and you can scroll and find the apartment that you would like to lease. And, uh, we will have ways for people to apply for those apartments through that process as well, so.
And then we're bringing a couple of other elements, specifically the apartments, that are a little bit unique. So the buildings are built all out of cold form steel. It's a hundred percent domestic U S steel. Actually comes out of a Nucor mill in South Carolina, sixty to ninety percent recycled content. Uh, we have, uh, heat pump, uh, laundry equipment. We have, uh, heat pump, uh, water heaters. Uh, the building's a hundred percent electrified. Uh, it sips electricity, so it's very, very green, very energy efficient. It will keep the operating cost down for the people that live there. So one of the elements of workforce housing is not only us providing this quality experience at the rent rate that we are, but also keeping the other costs that are associated with it down. And then of course, the fact that it's right in the urban corner and walkable to all of the retail that's surrounding the area. It really integrates into the existing retail, uh, to take advantage of all the redevelopment and gentrification that's happening right in downtown Apopka. But we, we had dinner at Naughty Lobster tonight, we had a real good experience there too, so. Um, so that was fun. And so that integration, that connection with the trail, the connection with the surrounding retail, and then this becomes the catalyst for additional development, because it puts a lot of density downtown with fifty-four families living down there that will spur growth. So, um, from a, from a timing standpoint, uh, we're currently going through all the site work. So what will happen is it will be a little bit slow right now because we've got to do things behind the scenes. We've got to finish all the third parties, updated survey, updated utilities. Uh, we've got to prepare the Brownfield app that the, we in the city are co-applicants on to get the Brownfield application in, which will take time with the state. And then we have to finish the site plan approval in, in, uh, partnership with the city. So, you know, that's gonna be a six to eight month process. We expect to be able to, to really, um, start showing some activity, uh, late fall. But then, once we get that preliminary work done, these buildings go up very, very quickly. They're like a giant erector set and so they get constructed very quickly. So it'll be a little bit of not seeing very much for the next few months while we get all this stuff behind the scenes with Bobby and his team. And then you'll see activity happening very, very, very quickly. So we can build these buildings in about six months, so they'll come out of the ground at the same time. So it'll be, um, pretty exciting to watch that as it happens live, so. And I don't know if the, Mr. Mayor or the rest of the Commissioners have any questions, but we're happy to.
Any, any questions?
Sure, so, um, this started back in twenty twenty-two. I have all the paperwork from when we sat down and we talked about this. But I have here something with, uh, our former Community Development Director, uh, which was February of last year. He had provided sort of a timeline and, um, it, so I'm, I'm kind of just trying to figure out what happened between twenty twenty-two and today that nothing really has been done. And it's just, the process is just gonna start now.
Yeah, I, I, I think- Yeah, I, I, I think Commissioner, with all due respect, in that timeframe, it's not that nothing has been done. There certainly were some changes at the city staff, and so we worked through that. We had to get the development agreement approved, if you recall. And so working through all those details was that interim period. So that actually predated our involvement in terms of some of that legal work that had to be done. And I, I can't speak to the speed at which the legal staffs on either side of the conversation move. So I apologize that sometimes lawyers don't move as fast as they should, but we, we've been actively moving. Since the developer agreement was finalized, we've been actively moving this forward and navigating through the regulatory environment that exists and accomplishing some things, so.
So when was the development agreement finally approved?
Oh, I have to go back and, and look at when that happened. That wasn't, it would be in the record because it happened here. I don't recall the exact date.
Bobby, any idea?
Okay. Last summer.
Last, last summer. So when, when you spoke with, I guess, our former Development Director, I mean, I have it here, where he has an entire timeline. Was there an agreement at that time with him to kind of follow through on this timeline?
No, we, I, I, I didn't agree to any timeline at all with Mr. Hit at all. No, no, ma'am.
Another thing you mentioned, which was you said the steel is made from the USA.
Correct.
But yet your flooring is coming from overseas.
Yeah, unfortunately with the flooring, there, there's no domestic manufacturing of flooring whatsoever. So trying to get LVT produced in the United States. We've been to Georgia. We went to Dalton. We met with the four major manufacturers out of Dalton. All of them manufacture in China. Our, our materials are actually coming out of Vietnam and they're coming directly from the producer. So unfortunately, that's the only place we could get that specific flooring. It's not produced anywhere in the United States.
So when do you plan to submit a site plan?
Oh, well, it's going to take us several months to work through the final site plan with the city.
Because, you know, our community is really asking for some movement down in the Station Street. And, and you are really the, kind of the anchor. We have to start putting residents in that area. We have to start building in that area, so.
We, we, we absolutely agree. We're excited about it.
And a lot of our residents are asking, when are they going to start moving dirt?
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so, okay.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, so do you have any, any idea what the rent rate is going to be?
I'm sorry?
The rent rates?
Yes, so our, our one bedroom rent rates are fourteen ninety-nine and our two bedroom rental rates are sixteen ninety-nine.
Okay, and the square footage for the one bedroom and the two bedroom?
It's, the square footage for the one bedroom is just under eight hundred square feet and the square footage for the two bedroom is just under eleven hundred square feet.
Okay, thank you. I've been in contact with y'all, so I kind of understand the process. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Good.
Commissioner Nesta?
I appreciate the, the update. It's definitely something we've seen before, so we definitely understand what the products you're offering, things like that. Are you able to forward us this presentation now that you have here?
I'm sorry?
Are you able to forward us this presentation?
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely. Happy to do it. Not a problem.
And then?
I apologize you didn't have it beforehand. I'm so sorry about that.
No, that's okay. It's a constant theme here, unfortunately.
No, sorry. That, that's my fault. Don't, I apologize. I'll make sure you have it.
The parking lot that you guys are creating, it's going to be a shared access parking lot, correct?
Correct.
For downtown, or Fifth Street more so, as well as your residents?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And these are going to be affordable or market rate?
Well, they're, they're going to be affordable market rate. So they, they're, they, they don't, they don't require any subsidy, if that's the question.
You just told us.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we, the, the people, so, so we, 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 we own and operate approximately twenty-three hundred apartments throughout Central Florida, including some here in Apopka. And the customers who generally live with us and the residents who choose to live with us earn generally between eighty percent and a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. Could be as low as sixty, as high as a hundred and forty, but we don't, we're not dependent on any government subsidies. We actually, the people who live with us are honest, hardworking people that have to get up and go to work every single day to pay their bills, and that's, that's who lives with us, so.
Okay. And, and again, well, where your financing is coming through, I, is none of that, I don't care that. I was just figuring out what this product type is exactly.
Oh, no, there, there, there are a number of banks that are very excited about this project. They're excited about being in Apopka. They're excited that we're partnering with the city, so the financing is not an issue.
So, and then, and, and thank you for that. You had spoken about some different designs that can go on the building, things like that. My goal within the kind of Fifth Street, as well as our CRAs, to start creating some standards, some building standards that have consistent and cohesive colors that really create a vibrant downtown area, which I think would benefit your product as well as our businesses as well. So I'd like to try to get on the same page with our CRA and have our CRA kind of create something as well that we can all kind of blend together. I think would be beneficial.
Ha- ha- happy to do it.
And then the other thing is, there are timelines prescribed within the DA itself.
Correct.
That, and I guess this is a question of, do you feel you're going to meet some of these deadlines that were built into it of the public plaza being built prior to January fifteenth, twenty twenty-six?
We, my one caveat there is the only thing I don't control is the abandonment of the utilities, and we have to work with all the utility providers and the city of Apopka. So save, Commissioner, that one specific fact. There's no reason that we should not be able to meet that deadline.
Should things go halfway decent, that's a, that's the direction that we're aiming towards. And then, you were stating that you need some third party reports to be done. Have third party reports already been ordered? Or are they in the process of being ordered?
No, they've been ordered.
And just not completed yet?
They're just not completed yet.
Okay, so, because this was certainly when we signed that DA, but it was summertime last year, so they weren't ordered right as soon as we signed the DA. Those are third party reports.
We, we had a little bit of work to do still with city staff in order to make sure they were correct beforehand, so.
What, that, what was correct?
That we were ordering the right specifications. So there were some specific things about the traffic study that were asked for. We have to get the utility maps correct. We had to make sure that we were updating from the existing surveyor that had already existed, so. There was just some coordination issues. That, that's all it comes down to.
Okay, understood. And then the, you've already started the Brownfield application with us? I know it's in tandem, correct?
It is in tandem, correct.
Has that already been applied for?
It has not been applied for yet, no.
Okay. Is that something we have to wait on, or are you guys waiting on us in any capacity, or what's that?
No, we're, we're doing all three of the phases that I described concurrently.
Oh, okay, concurrent. Okay, I just want to make sure we're not doing.
No, they're, they're not sequential. No, that, it would not work if they were sequential. So they're, they're running, they're running in parallel for sure.
Okay. And you said about a six month build time, once we get everything approved and knocked out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, we look forward to definitely the, the housing downtown, the walkability, and then that community center in the area is going to be huge for us. So we look forward to it.
We're very excited to be partnering with you, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, next up, Border Lake update. And I don't know if you've seen your partners in the Orange County over on the, on the wall there. Got Mike Gozak and, and Jeff Charles, and I know Commissioner Moore is here as well, so.
Okay. So is this, and just to start off, are we presenting this in tandem with Orange County, or are you doing your presentation and then Orange County is doing theirs?
As far as I know it, I'm doing my part and I'm not aware of any presentation coming from Orange County part, but.
Okay.
All right, hello, my name is Doc Waup, P E, Utilities, I'm manager, Public Service. So the purpose of this presentation tonight is to discuss some of the flooding issues in our community. And most of the lakes that we're going to talk about tonight is around St. Row four thirty-six and Piedmont Wakaba Lake Road. Mainly Border Lake, Lake Cortez, and Lake Ruton. So let's start with Border Lake. Okay, sorry. Okay. So like any of the lakes here that we're going to talk about today, they are situated in a closed basin. So for us, the definition of open and closed basin is pretty important, but for your knowledge tonight, all you need to know is that there's no natural outflow for a closed basin lake. So the only way for the water to naturally go out is either through seepage or evaporation. And the soil at Border Lake is not very good, obviously, so the only way for it to leave is through evaporation. That's obviously not quick enough. So historically, because of that, Border Lake area has been known for having flood issues. There are flood events that's been traced back as far as back to the sixties. Okay, so here is a basin breakdown between Border Lake and Lake Cortez. As you can see, Orange County is part of it, Seminole County is part of it, and Lake Apopka is part of it. It's difficult to tell the story of Border Lake without mentioning Lake Cortez, but we'll go to Lake Cortez a little, little bit later. Here is, you can see a historical elevation from two thousand two till today of Border Lake and Lake Cortez. The lake elevation fluctuates with the season, but you can pretty much easily tell whenever there's a huge hurricane happening. You can tell in two thousand seventeen, there's a huge spike. It's due to Hurricane Irma. And ever since then, our lake level, it never got a chance to recover, just because we've been hit over and over again with historical hurricanes. Hurricane Michael, Hurricane Milton, Hurricane Ian, we all know the names. Let's go back to the shape of Border Lake for a second. What you see here of Border Lake is what's remained of Border Lake. The natural offshore, the, the natural shoreline of Border Lake used to extend to the north of four thirty-six. Ever since this construction of four thirty-six, it bisected the natural shoreline of Border Lake. So in order for them to keep the hydraulic conductivity of the southern part and northern part, FTD has constructed a covert underneath the road to keep the hydraulic conductivity. So whenever Border Lake floods, the water will flow naturally from south of four thirty-six to north of four thirty-six. Eventually finds its way into Lake Cortez. And this is obviously confirmed by a Piedmont, Piedmont Wakaba era lake outflow study that is commissioned by Orange County back in nineteen ninety-six. And it's been reconfirmed by numerous studies at that time. And when St. Row four thirty, four thirty-six was reconstructed, the covert was replaced by a ditch bottom inlet. But the function remains. The ditch bottom inlet helped retain the water within the Border Lake basin. So in a normal rain event, the water will fall into the ditch bottom inlet and fall into Border Lake. But thi- this ditch bottom inlet eventually still functions as a failsafe for Border Lake to outflow into Lake Cortez. Just like it has been done for decades and probably hundreds of years before that. Okay, go back one step. But go back to this page. As you can see, both Lake Cortez and Border Lake have struggled to recover after a hurricane in the two thousand seventeen. But there are few houses that were built below the flood elevation before the flood plane was except, established at Lake Cortez. So in order for both Apopka and Orange County to help protect these houses, hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent pumping water from Lake Cortez to a retention pump up north. And at the same time, the ditch bottom inlet between Border Lake and Lake Cortez was plugged back in twenty eighteen to discontinue this hydraulic connectivity.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? What happened between in two thousand eighteen?
The ditch bottom inlet, just on the north side of four thirty-six, was plugged somewhere around two thousand eighteen to discontinue this hydraulic connectivity between the two lakes.
Was that a, did that, was there a side effect to that being plugged?
Can we get it at the end?
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah.
Just, if you could just speak a little louder for me.
Okay, I'll, I'll get closer to the mic.
Thank you.
Volume's always been a problem. All right, so here is a short term solution that's been put together by my counterparts in Orange County. Mike Gozak and Daniel Negrum, who's here in the audience today. I want to give a lot of credit to them. They frankly have worked on floodings in this area a lot longer than I have, so I want to give a lot of credit along with their consultants to put this together. So essentially, the idea here is to pump the excess lake water from Border Lake to Lake Page, where there's a confirmed drainage well. It's the only confirmed drainage well outside of Lake Pleasant, who's even further in this area. So this is going to require four legs of pumping, imagining like a relay race. So the water is going to be pumped from Border Lake to Lake Jackson, oh god. And from Lake Jackson to Lake Medade, and from Lake Medade to Lake Piedmont, and from Lake Piedmont to Blue Lake. Now, Blue Lake and Lake Page is connected with a covert just under the road. So once you, essentially, you can imagine, once we get to Blue Lake, it's kind of under the relay. It's connected to Lake Page. Now, this plan is pretty well researched and pretty well thought out. But as you can imagine, anything like this takes a lot of, there's a lot of challenges in both execution wise and permitting wise. As of today, we have gotten verbal confirmation from FDP that they will allow us to have a one-time operation, allow us to discharge into Lake Page, because otherwise it's not allowed for us to discharge into the drainage well directly. But, and execution wise, the difficulty, as you can imagine, there's going to be some disruption to the homeowners who's in that area. Obviously, we can't be pumping twenty-four seven. That could be a disruption to their daily lives. But I've been told by my, by my counterparts that they have had some experience in the past as far as asking permissions from the local owners to have us having pumps set up adjacent to their areas. There, there's, there's other difficulties that I, we can go into as far as groundwater recharge. I think as far as cost wise, my counterparts in Orange County have reached out to their vendors to find out about what the potential cost is. And from what they can find out, it's around sixteen thousand a week to keep all four legs of pumping twenty-four seven. That includes fuel, operation, all that stuff. And I think the initial calculation tells us it takes about three hundred seventy-eight hours to pump the lake down to a normal elevation from previous years. But obviously, as you can imagine, that's not going to be a straight three hundred seventy-eight hour pump, because we're not going to be able to pump twenty-four seven. And as we stop, there could be seepage from adjacent lakes back into it to bring the level up a little bit. So the actual operational length could be a lot longer than that. So it's hard for me to give you a direct what the future cost could be, but sixteen thousand a week, that's just for your reference. Okay, so what can we do long term wise? What I talked about previously was a short term solution that's been put together by Orange County. And within City of Apopka, we have been working on long term solutions for several years now. So there's multiple solutions, and all of them has one com- common denominator with, which is to pump the excess water from Border Lake to somewhere else. So in this situation, you can see there is a tentative location for a pumping station just adjacent to Border Lake. And once we get that set up, we can, the potential options here are either pump it directly into our wastewater treatment plant, treat it, and use it as reclaimed water for our citizens, or send it into a different network and send it to Lake Apopka for indirect discharge. Now, each option, back to what I was saying earlier, has its own permitting difficulties. And each option has its own cost associated to it. So right now, what we're working on is to determine which one is the best option for us, both permitting difficulty wise and cost. Because there's a current cost associated to it and potentially a future cost associated to it. And what we're currently working on, working on is that our consultant is working on groundwater modeling in that area. Because anytime you draw down the water significantly, it's going to be an effect to the groundwater. So whether groundwater is going to have effect on wetland or anything like that, it's all something that St. John's River Water Management would want to know. So all those data, regardless with, regardless which option we go with, those are studies that need to be done. So additionally, you can see there is a purple line just adjacent to Border Lake. That is a existing infrastructure, which is a sixteen inch reclaimed pipe that's being pumped into our wastewater treatment system right now by Utility Zinc, also called Sunshine Water, which is a private utility company. We are taking their reclaimed water right now. Because it's proximity to Border Lake, there is a possibility for us to tap into that system directly and save us a lot of cost on pipes. And they have given us permission to use their system. We have gotten verbal confirmation from them. But in reality, the, when it comes to it, that may or may not be the best option, just because on the surface, surface, it seems like the cheapest. Just because usually when it comes to operation, we want to pump around the same time that they want to pump. So there's a trade off in terms of practicality and cost. And we're still working on the best option moving forward. Once we have that decided, a new update for us, for you guys, it's, it's warranted. Now, money. We have two pending grants that's in work right now to help us accomplish the long term plan. Emphasis on pending. So one is a two point five million grant that has no match requirements. And another one is a three point seven million dollar grant with a match requirement of one point two five, so a total of seven point five million if we acquire it. And another one is a three-point-seven million dollar grant with a match requirement of one-point-two-five, so total of seven-point-five million if we acquire it. Uh, our current funding situation is that we have five-hundred thousand dollar allotted to do the study that was mentioning earlier, as far as helping us do the permitting for the long-term, uh, solution and also modeling for the groundwater impacts. Okay, next we can talk about Lake Ruden. Lake Ruden, just like the previous two lakes we talked about, is a closed basin lake. As it sits right now today, it does not drain anywhere. Um, historically, there was a drainage well that was designed for this lake. Now, drainage well is a very common structure in central Florida, there's over six hundred that's been built back in the day, but uh, Orange County right now, I think, managed somewhere between seventy to eighty, so it is a common structure you just don't see around it. But FDP has stopped giving out permits for drainage well since the seventies. So all the drainage well today are grandfathered in before nineteen eighty-two. Now, they still allow you to have a replacement well if there's a functioning one that needs to be fixed, so it's kind of like a one-for-one situation. But this existing drainage well, um, as of yesterday, was thought to be lost. Um, there was an effort by Orange County a few years ago, tried to locate this. Uh, they closed down the right turn lane on this intersection and, uh, for half a day. Saw cut of the pavement, dug into it and looked for it, but that effort, uh, came to no fruition, we wasn't able to find it. So at the time, we thought this drainage well was lost, and because it was considered lost by both Orange County and Saint John's, FDP would not allow any new construction of a drainage well, but the latest information as of today is that there seemed to be a slimmer of hope. Um, Saint, uh, one hydrologist by Saint John today, just out there doing some work on their own found a structure that's unidentified. We made an effort this afternoon to try to locate it, we found it, but we weren't able to know what that structure is for. As you can tell, this is ongoing investigation, so every week we're having, giving new information, so once us and Orange County is able to identify it, um, there is a slimmer of hope that there is indeed a drainage well. But once we found it, I think we have verbal confirmation from FDP, if you found it, you could get a replacement well, so that will solve a lot of problems. But as we sit today, this lake does not drain anywhere. So, so whenever the lake level is, is high, the only way for us to relieve the level here, um, is by pumping it down. And that's what we did over and over again for the past few years. Anytime where there's a large hurricane or rain event coming, we will get an emergency permit from Saint John's, set up a pump, and pump the water from the lake onto Piedmont Wakava Road, where there's a drainage system, we'll take it into the retention pond here. And this is what we did over and over again, which is also what we did back in Hurricane Milton time. This is a sample of, um, the emergency plan they would normally put together for Saint John to see to show them the type of operation they want to do, and it's approved by them pretty much every time. Here are a few pictures of the operations that we do, you can see the pump is set up, it's discharged directly into inlet on Piedmont Wakava Road. Here are a couple flooding pictures that has happened last year near Border Lake and, um, the neighborhoods nearby. Here are two pictures from Wakava Village who experienced, uh, decent level of flooding last year. Uh, the picture on the left you see is a tiger dam that was set up, uh, with the help of the state. And on the right is a complete layout of this tiger dam. Now, again, this tiger dam was a collaborative effort between us and Orange County, I think the idea was came up by the staff in Orange County to quickly have this set up, uh, by requesting, um, through the emergency service. And, uh, the, the flooding I, at Wakava Village was caused by multiple ponds overtopping. Um, I think, I, I, I would completely understand the frustration of all the citizens at Wakava Village, especially the fact that flooding happened several days after the event. Um, but, but it is important to keep in mind that delayed flooding is very common. And if you remember, there were several day, we experienced a hurricane just before Hurricane Milton, so all the soil was saturated. So it's hard for, uh, in a closed basin, it's already difficult to drain, when the soil is super saturated, it's even more difficult. And usually it takes a lot of time for water to flow, she flow from area to area. So delayed flooding, uh, due to delayed runoff, is very common. So when Wakava Village experienced their flooding in the cul-de-sac on the west side, it was because Lake Piedmont down here had overtopped onto Piedmont Wakava Road, got into their drainage system, ended up in the retention pond, overtopped it, and went into the lake. It's a, it's a combination of multiple lakes, right? For example, Lake Ruden and Border Lake are normally not connected. But because everything flooded onto the streets, almost all the lakes in this area becomes hydraulic connectivity, connected. What happened that day was because earlier that day, Lake Piedmont had become, had overtopped onto the streets. It got into the inlet in the streets, which leads to the retention pond between Oasis and Wakava Village. When that overtops, it gets into the wetland system and the lake on the west side, which overflowed all the cul-de-sac area. Yeah. Yes. Yes, I can ans- answer questions after this. So, like I was saying, so the frustration and, the frustration of Wakava Village citizens is, is valid, is well-founded. And as anyone would be in that situation, but just know that delayed flooding is a very common phenomenon. And that was a cause of a hundred-year event, which will stretch the infrastructure of any city, not just City of Apopka. So when tragedy like this happens, there's always something we can learn from. Perhaps next time we'll be more readily have the tiger dam ready, we'll speed up, quicken up our r- response time. But what happened is just what happens when a natural disaster happens. So I see a lot of questions want to be asked, so I'll conclude it right here and, uh, open for questions.
Commissioners, do y'all want to have, uh, county folks come up first and then we'll ask questions? Okay, Jeff, Mike, or, or Commissioner, Levers?
We did not prepare a, and complete presentation because Orange County staff did work with, with doubt to put that presentation together, so I just had a few little comments and then staff is here, um, to answer any questions. Uh, this was a terrible tragedy this last time. Uh, I can remember after the storm driving all over the place, trying to find out how the water was getting from here to there. And we did determine, a lot of it was through the road systems and through the inlets. But I don't want us to forget that it is Border Lake that is causing the problem into all these other lakes. And that is what we really need to focus on today. You gonna put it in there?
Okay.
Which one is it?
And I, I will say, during that storm period, we had cross interests, and this is why we have to find a, a temporary solution. That, that shopping center needed to have their water get out of Lake Ruden and across the street. But Wakava, the townhomes, if more water came across the street, it was actually topping over our pond and the unnamed lake was flooding them. And so they went out in the middle and put a tarp up in sandbags, which then caused more flooding to the shopping center. For years, we've been managing Lake Cortez quite well, and staff's here to tell you more about it if you have questions. Um, between sandbags of bladder, now I won't tell you it's easy, I will not tell you that Lake Cortez is happy about it. But we did manage to not flood any homes because we were able to pump it up, strain north to a pond right behind the CBS. So I think most of us are aware of the problem today, we're here to find a solution. We had very good news this morning, we did not have it until this morning. And that is the next slide, am I supposed to be doing, Alex, do you want to do? There we go, do it for me. Okay, this is the good news, and I thought you should all see it because it is a, an email from FDP. And for a couple of weeks, we weren't sure we were going to get permission. Most of you know, since the nineteen seventies, Saint John Water Management, FDP, regulate all these types of functions. And we always have to apply to these agencies to get permission to, to do anything of this nature. And so you can see from Kami doing, that we do have permission one time to do this. And so it is very important that we continue to work together towards a long-term solution, whether that's an additional drain well, or it's Mayor Nelson's plan. So that was good news. Now, I, I, in about twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we, um, all got together after that time, after Ian, and we had the state there. We had Seminole County there, Orange County and Apopka, mayor was there, I was there. And I will tell you, it's not good news, but the state wasn't interested in contributing to a solution, they're not here tonight. And Seminole County was not interested in contributing. But we are your friends, we are here, I've been pushing this because I don't want to see these people go through this again. It, it was just a travesty, the nerves, the fear that was going on, it's not acceptable. And you can see from the historic numbers that if we have another rainy season, we have another wet hurricane, this lake is, Border Lake is already higher than it was at the same time last year. So to do nothing, in my estimation, is, is not the way to go. Now, we have one little disagreement with it, with the, the city, but I don't think it's a big one, we can work through it. We don't, when we look at responsibilities and jurisdictions, we don't put Lake Cortez with Border Lake. And, and so when you look at cost sharing on these different solutions, our staff considers we have one percent responsibility, but I'm here, I've been working on this for months. And so we want to be your partner on this, but we don't see it the way you had it in your presentation, that this is mostly our problem, because we see the problem is Border Lake. The road was designed, and staff is here, if I make any mistakes with this, uh, four thirty-six was designed to not cause flooding to Lake Cortez, but it is, we've been managing it. But now with these higher levels, we're not managing Border Lake coming into the city. And so it's time, I believe, for the, for all of us to work together. If we're gonna get Seminole and the state maybe, but at this point, they're not here, but we're here, so let's make this work. So my next slide is a little bit, our staff, and maybe they want to come up here, we, we kind of fine-tuned today what we could do from our side to make this easier for you on your short-term solution. Do you want to come up, Mike, and explain? Um, we are willing, Mike, we talked this through with his bosses at Public Works and um, our deputy administrator. And so we are willing to do all the applications for all the permits. And we've already done a study to can you, tend to do that, and, uh, also put in, they're gauges, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I'm gonna let Mike explain it because he's some technical guy, but I want you to be very clear on what we can do with technical expertise to make sure we can get this pumped out before rainy season.
Thank you, Commissioner, um, good evening. Um, yes, the, the, the plan that, that we have laid out, um, you can see up there the direction to the, um, city staff obtain, uh, required right of entry access agreements, which is to set up the pumps, the temporary pumps that would pump, you know, from Border to Jackson, McDade, uh, Piedmont Blue, and ultimately into, um, Page. Uh, to execute a vendor contract for the one-time pumping of Border Lake to the normal dry season elevation per Saint John's River Water Management District within that ninety-day, um, period with, um, and the county would be um, submitting for the, uh, and assisting the city in the emergency field authorization, um, permit and all the technical data, uh, needed to obtain that. And the county would also, uh, complete a, a survey of, um, the, um, fin- lowest finished floors around each lake, which was a concern of the water management and DEP um, as part of this pumping plan, so we don't want to create a, uh, uh, a problem. And we would be setting up staff gauges that could be read, um, daily and reported to, uh, the Saint John's River Water Management District, which would be a requirement, just to ensure that, you know, the pumping is working, but we're not creating another, um, problem downstream.
And, uh, we're gonna go to the next slide with some good news, and then you come back if, if that motion is something you all want to make. Um, I, I do want to tell you a little bit about, um, right before, uh, President Biden left office, uh, we were sent thirty-three million dollars for hurricane Milton mitigation. Now, you all probably follow the news like I do, I don't know if this will get clawed back. We do not have a, a contract with the federal government yet. But we did call on your behalf, we did call consultants over the last few days, Mike did. And we believe that this would qualify, but not under the low income because the income of this area with the residents would not make it suitable for this grant. But it could potentially be, um, a project under the emergency side of it. And then you would have to apply, and that mayor, that would be a place where maybe you could get some money for your long-term plan. Now, this is all a little bit conjecture at this point because we don't have the contract signed. And we don't know if the feds are gonna let us keep this money, but it's a little ray of hope of finding some money. And we did see recently with the, the county got two-hundred-and-eighteen million dollars for Hurricane Ian and Ermen mitigation, and many cities applied. We were not hit with, uh, as many water problems up here, so we, we've seen money go for Orla Vista. I know Coe's applied for three grants, and so we're hopeful that some of this money for storm mitigation potentially could be used for you. And so I, I'm gonna leave the, uh, you know, requested action, y'all need to have discussion. I just put that together so that we, you could have a clear picture of what we can do and then what the expectation would be of the City of Apopka. And I stand here for any questions or our staff.
All right, any questions for staff, either city or county?
Boy, there's plenty of questions, um. Lake Cortez has been going on back from what I can remember when the residents used to call me, two thousand fourteen, fifteen. So basically, Lake, Border Lake has always been the cause of Lake Cortez's flooding. And not the other way around. And is that correct? Is that something that you're trying?
Yes, and Jeff is here because he's been working for the county the whole time. And he's welcome to answer any questions about how we have managed Lake Cortez. I don't know, Jeff, do you want to answer any of that?
Jeff, as you're coming up, thank you, thank you for all of your help. I mean, we've been out there multiple times, I was out there with you on four thirty-six, digging up middle of last summer, I guess, looking for the drainage well, and then multiple times out there, uh, appreciate all your help. I know, uh, we had our staff out putting sandbags on your, on your pond, which ultimately didn't, didn't do a lot. But, you know, we, it was something we, we felt like we needed to do for the neighborhood. But we, we appreciate, you know, your and Mike's, uh, help a- all along the way. I mean, you guys have been, you know, first class and, and, uh, the, the cooperation between our streets department and uh, public services and Orange County has been, uh, second to none, so I appreciate, you know, what you've done. But I, I want to go back and just ask you, I, I, I know we talk about Border Lake as the, 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 the epicenter of the problem. But I would suggest to you and to, to the, the crowd here, that probably not even that, if you go upstream even from there, it's Bear Lake. If Bear Lake is the, you know, the, it, it's a, a higher elevation than Border. I mean, obviously, it doesn't, it doesn't get there, it's just like it's a closed basin as well. But I can tell you that, uh, last year and also in, after seventeen, as you remember, the wall on the backside of, of Border Lake, uh, which is, you know, obviously Seminole County, uh, it's that, the back driveway to, um, to the, the Lumen property. Remember, water was coming through the wall, um, from Seminole County dripping onto the, onto that driveway and then into, to Border Lake. So it, 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 it's even bigger than, you know, the, the area we're talking about. But, but that, I just want to, for, for context, just want to talk about, you know, obviously, we know Border Lake is the, the headwaters of our problem. obviously, we know Border Lake is the headwaters of our problem. And so I just want to get kind of your thoughts on, you know, what, what, what you think. Or Mike, whatever. I, I know y'all are about Bear Lake.
Yeah, yeah, Bear Lake, we, we actually contacted Seminole County as, yeah, yes. Yes, sir, Mayor. We actually contacted Seminole County about the possibility of pumping to that area. And that lake was also high right after Milton. Now, this year, I didn't see it so much coming through. We were more focused, of course, on Border Lake. And I, I think the Border Lake issue really got extremely overtasked because it was already full, as Da had said, because of the rains we were getting before the storm even hit. So it was really a wet season right before. And then the pumping that was going on, we were working with FDOT and allowing FDOT to pump to one of our retention ponds behind the CBS. And then Orange County was also pumping Lake Cortez into another pond that we had that was able to take some water, but we had to kind of cycle it on and off. But, but the overall problem with Border Lake, I think this time, it, it connected with Ruden. It ran through the Hobby Lobby parking lot. And I've worked for the county for 38 years, and I've never seen it that way ever, where it actually connected to Lake Ruden. But I physically saw it the same day the mayor and, of course, Commissioner Moore was out there as well. And it did connect to Lake Ruden, and then it spilled over into the county system, and it blew out the retention pond, ultimately dumping a lot of water really fast by the Wakava Land condos. So that, that was one of the main critical things that happened this year. So we, we came up with a plan, and it's something that we would like to present to you. That it's a temporary one. And of course, as Commissioner said as well, we do want to work as a partner with you. And we're willing to do our end of it if, if you choose to follow through with that. We're more than well, willing to do that. You know, we, we're willing to do all the, you know, the engineering part of it and get the permit and everything like that. But yes, if there's any other.
So any questions? And just direct, if you want county or city staff or, or all the above.
So how soon can we start the pumping of that?
It's going to require that, that the actual finished floor elevations are obtained by survey. We would have to set the survey gauges up so that they could be read every day. And then it would be when we get the actual permit that would allow it. But the logistic part of it would be having the pumps in an area where you would have a right of entry for these pumps to sit. Because where we've actually came up with the idea where they could be is in people's yards. And I understand it is disruptive, but if it's a flooding thing that you want to get rid of, that's what we came up with as a temporary solution.
When, when you say in homeowners' front yards, which homeowners are we referring to?
We, we actually have a map, and I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it was, you know, we had.
Yeah, we, we do have a map that, that we can share with you. Yeah, and it's actually not in their front yards. It would be like in their side or in their backyards. And we projected that it would run 24 hours a day to get it down to a certain point. If we don't run them 24 hours a day, it's just going to take longer. So that, that's an option too. And I, I understand it would be disruptive. I, I live by a canal, and we've had to have pumps set up before. I understand, I do understand.
Again, which, which residence is that? Which homeowner, is that like Lake Cortez?
No.
No, no, ma'am. It's, it's actually going to be in the Piedmont Lake subdivision. And, and there was a, we actually came up with four pumps, and it may be able to be reduced down to three if the pump inside of the Piedmont Lakes, the neighborhood that has, they have their own little pump station there. But we're not sure if it works. If it works, that would also take some of the costs down as well. We checked out what we could in the field, and it actually has power to the pump, but it's got a fence around it and it's locked. So we, we didn't even know who to contact because it's in a HOA in the City of Apopka. So we didn't have any kind of contact there.
So when are you looking to start this? Like to knock on their doors and let them know that they are potential homeowners, that we're going to need their backyard or their side yard?
Right. And that's what we, that's what we were proposing that the city pursue because it's in the city jurisdiction and to see if they would be willing to let that happen. That was something that we would ask that the city would do, just because it's in your jurisdiction. Out of respect for everybody here.
Okay. So what happens if those homeowners say no?
If they say no, then we have no other option really other than to continue pursuing something, maybe either with the drain well or the long-term plan that Mayor Nelson had.
And, you know, one of the things we, Da, that we, we worked on, we just, I mean, we're all obviously kicking around ideas. And one of the things is Utilities Inc., which he showed you, can you go back to that, the, the picture, Da, on where shows the Utilities Inc. line? Okay, so another option that I think we could do concurrently with, with the county's plan, which I think is a, is a, is a good short-term plan is, we've, I've reached out to Utilities Inc. Hopefully get a call back from Utilities Inc. They, they've tenderly agreed, Da, I know, contacted them as well, that we're, they're tenderly agreed to allow us to use their pipe, the 16-inch pipe that, that's literally 1,000 feet, 1,200 feet from, from Border Lake as an alternative to getting water. It's a 16-inch pipe. So I mean, we could, we could, I mean, push a lot of water from Border Lake into that pipe, but realizes that we're their, their, their ultimate source for their reclaim water. The water has to come to us from Utilities Inc. So, and then the other, the, um, challenge with that is we can't mix the water. So we have to, we'd have to flush. And, and so it's, it's a little more of a, of a, from our end, a little, little more difficult than just, you know, turning on and off between Utilities Inc. water coming to our plant and us taking the excess water off Border Lake. But with a 16-inch pipe going from Border Lake to Utilities, I mean, to our plant at Cleveland, we can, we can absolutely, I know, Da, the numbers, I know, I don't want to hold you to them because it was back, back of the napkin, you calculate it really fast. But it's, it, you were, we were talking about a half a foot a day is what we could ultimately take off Border Lake.
Yeah, so ultimately, what the mayor was saying is that take the first step of the long-term solution and just commit to it and turn it into a short-term solution. So regardless, we do plan to have a pumping station here. The reason we have, um, we have doubts about whether we want to use Utility, Utility Zink's pipe is because in long-term wise, when it comes down to it, it's very possible that us and them are going to want to use it at the same time. We will want to pump it down the lake right before a hurricane comes, a few foot, just to build out the storage. They will want to pump just before hurricane because that's where they receive the most amount of rainfall. So operation-wise, that's the reason there is some concern whether we want to do it long-term. But if you want to do this as a short, short-term solution, it kind of negates that concern because if we can connect it and pump it down right away, regardless if a hurricane happened or not, what, as, as, as long as we get a 90-day emergency operation from FDP, just similar to the other plan, we can, we can do it. And just like what Mayor was saying, it requires some rewiring of pipes at the location and also at the, at our wastewater treatment plant. But all those stuff could be worked out at relatively small prices. So what's good about this plan is that it initially initiates the first step of the long-term solution regardless.
Yeah, so, so long-term, we want to run a, a pipe. That the long-term solution is us to run a pipe, our own pipe in that easement that we already have from Border Lake all the way out to, to our plant at Cleveland. So long-term, we want our own pipe. But if, with, with a short-term agreement with Utilities Inc., we could, we can absolutely move even more water than the, than the short-term Orange County plan. I mean, we can really move a lot of water. Obviously, we've got to get their buy-in, also have the same permitting, you know, DEP in St. John's, make sure that they're, they're comfortable with that. But, um, so I think, I would, you know, we can run both concurrently. I mean, and, you know, and, and I think, you know, we're, we're here to help the county and, and, you know, we can start tomorrow. I can send a team out and start looking, you know, asking neighbors, you know, about the, uh, setting up a pump station. But I also would like to get with Utilities Inc. and make sure that DEP and St. John's don't have a problem with that. And so I, I don't know.
My, my question from Mr. Da, do we have the capacity at Cleveland to take all this water?
As of right now, we do, yes. As of right now, the capacity is more controlled by our daily intake. So as long as we stay within our capacity, yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, yes. I, I heard him say that if we ran the pumps 24 hours and that's what he preferred, how, how many days would that pump have to run for 24 hours that we asking our residents and lots to put that pump in their yard?
I think the, I think the initial calculation that I mentioned earlier was 370-some hours, which translates to.
Twelve and a half days.
Twelve and a half.
Correct. Good math.
Twelve and a half days.
So twelve and a half days.
Yeah, that's the initial calculation, but I would hope that, that we, we, you guys don't hold us to that just because that's the very initial calculation. In real operation-wise, the water seep back and forth and.
Correct. So, so I, I would suggest that that's what we're going to do. And if we're going to ask the residents and lots to put the pump in their yard, that, you know, we, we ask them for 20 days as opposed to 12.
That would be ideal for both of us.
Because you're talking, because on day 12, they're going to be asking when you're going to turn this thing off. Because that's what we ask. And so that, I, I'd rather turn it off early than to have it extend past that period of time.
We will tell them the same thing.
Now, one of the things that we, we, we all have no idea, and that is, what's the groundwater seepage back into the lake? So we could pump it down three feet, but depending on the hydraulics and, and the groundwater table, it probably is not going to last.
Well, that's why I said to ask them for more than 12 days.
No, but I'm saying it's, if we quit it 20 days, 10 days later, it could be back to where it was. It won't be 10 days, but it will be a certain amount of time the water level could come back. We, you know, and, and that's one of the things that we're doing in our, and I know, Da, we've got in our, our, our preliminary, not design, but the feasibility. I know that's one of the big things that you're looking at, right?
Yeah, as part of the feasibility, you got to look at how the groundwater interacts with the lake just because the lake level is held up by the groundwater. So if you're severely drawing it down, it's going to have an impact on the groundwater. And when there's a huge head difference, it's going to seep back in.
And is St. John going to give us a restriction as to how low we can pump these lakes?
Yes, that is a conversation that we just had today to determine what level we want to pump it down to. I told them, I made a suggestion to pump it down to a level that's pre-2017, since that's been the historical average elevation. But they are more comfortable to pump it down to average elevation between 2017 till today, just because the more you pump down to, the more impact you're going to have.
All right. And so you mentioned $16,000 a week. And have we?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Sixty.
I thought it was sixteen.
Sixteen, one-six, one-six, one-six.
One-six? Oh, one-six. Yeah, okay.
I thought they said sixteen.
Yeah, but budget for sixty and give us that.
Okay, okay.
All right. Yeah, yes. All right, so, so at $16,000 a week, have we determined who, who's funding the $16,000 a week?
We are.
The whole sixteen?
Mm-hmm. They aren't taking 1% responsibility, so.
That doesn't sound fair to me. I mean, I mean, we, we can get it done and argue about it later as to who owes who.
Commissioner, we, when we presented a minute ago, we talked about all of the permitting. We've already been doing studies. And so I would suggest to you, our costs are very similar to that. So we, we're going to do all this setup, and then you were going to pay for the pumping. That, that was what I offered to you. And remember, I got 1%. Seminole's not here, and the state's not here. We got to get this done.
Well, that's what I said. I mean, go ahead and do it, then we worry about who owes who later.
I can't because I talked to the higher-ups, and that's all I'm allowed to offer you today. Now, can I go back and ask again? Yes, but it was, it was fairly good split with all of the preliminary work we're going to do for you.
All right. And then the other part of my question was that you, you suggested that there's going to be, there's a $33 million package out there and that we could apply to get some of that money. But there's no guarantee at this point that you're going to get it. So that means there's no guarantee that we would get the grant if we apply.
Not at this point, but I'm optimistic. And so we can try, and, and with this long-term plan, you know, let's apply for it.
Mr. Nesta?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you both to our city staff and county staff for this. It's long overdue for sure, and, and our residents obviously are here to find a solution. And, and I appreciate everyone working together on this. I'll start on the city side and then articulate my questions to the county side from there. So we have a study already done. We just paid it in January for $71,000 for a Border Lake study. What is that going to tell us, or what is our goals for that to tell us?
I'm sorry, what's 71?
$71,000 we spent last month on a Border Lake study.
Oh, I think that's part of.
Well, Blanks knows how to spend the money. But I need to know what that study is telling us.
The study is actually 460,000. That was just one payment that you saw in the study.
Okay, I understand that. So what's, what's the study going to tell us?
So like I was mentioning before, they were currently doing the modeling of the groundwater. So to see the impact of that, if you draw down the lake water, the groundwater is going to move. Whether, whether there's negative impact to the well adjacent to it or not, that's the result we need to find in order to submit to St. John's for them to give us the permit.
So we need that $460,000 study to even get this emergency pumping permit?
Uh, no, no, that is for our long-term solution, not just for the emergency one. Yeah.
Okay.
This emergency one does not require the study.
Okay. So we're going to spend 460 just on a study, and then the long-term solution, how much is that supposed to cost us?
I would love to give you exact cost today, but like I said before, there are multiple options and avenues that we can choose from. But just to give you a frame of reference, we had a feasibility study done back in 2019 on the pumping solution here. And at the time, the quote on the pumping station, just the pumping station itself, it ranges between whatever model we want to go with, it's between 900,000 to 2 million. That was the estimation done in 2019.
How much was that?
That's not quite an estimate.
It varies between 900,000 to 2 million. Depends on what model of the pump we want to go with.
So it was from 900 to 1 million?
Two.
Two million.
Two million.
And that was 2019, so costs were definitely.
Oh, so that was, and that was.
And that's just the pumping station. That doesn't include the pipe to run.
Right, that's not include the pipe because, like I said, many different options.
So a rough, rough number, as rough as those numbers are, is 5 million bucks? To get the pump, the piping, permitting?
Don't, don't commit.
No, I'm not asking for.
I'm sorry, is there a question to that?
Yes. Is that a, is that a decent number to, to estimate on?
I can tell you for sure. I, I don't want to stand here and give you an inaccurate estimation without doing some detail.
And the reason for my questioning in this capacity is that the goal of tonight is to move forward with solutions.
Correct.
I need to know what I'm spending and how to budget for it. So with your expertise, and that's what I'm, your professional opinion, more than 5 million, less than 5 million, more than 10 million, less than 10 million. I need to know what that long-term solution looks like so I can budget for both and understand where our funds are coming from.
Yeah, once we have a final solution that we want to put our foot down and go forward, a cost, a detailed cost mission, cost estimate will come. But right now, we're still in the modeling phase.
So once the modeling is done on that Border Lake study, that will give us costing for this?
No, once the study is done, it helps with a better view of which option we want to go with. Once we make that determination, a cost estimate will come.
So okay. The long-term solutions just don't, I, we don't have like any information. okay, the long term solutions just don't, we don't have like any information for that. So that's hard to kind of figure out what we're doing there. The one solution that's actually been presented here on the long term side is we're pumping into Utilities Inc., but we don't have first priority at any time. We have to default to their use, and as long as they give us permission, then we can pump to it.
It would need to be a coordination effort between us and them, but because the pipe is owned by them, I would assume they will have the right of way.
Priority. So and that's my concern is that the time that we need it, our emergency time, we won't be able to use it. So that's what's concerning about funding this and then not being able to use it when I need it.
Yeah, that is a concern that we're well aware of. That's why there's always hesitant whether that is on the paper, the cheapest option, whether we do want to go with that or not. Because if that wasn't a concern, we would have committed to that a long time ago, right?
Okay, and then we discussed grant funding in our presentation, and we discussed this during our agenda review as well. If we're going to commit to any solution, I'd rather not wait for grants to come in. We need to figure out how to fund it and get this done prior to hurricane season happening, or at least start the process. So I know this isn't gonna be an overnight thing, but at the same time, we need to start the process, and obviously, we've spent half a million on it. We need to make sure that we're using that money towards good things. More of a comment than anything.
Understand that, sure.
And then two, the the PowerPoint that you presented is a little bit different than the one that we got. So if you can, just forward that one out, and Orange County as well, if we can get a copy of that one too, please, just so we have that digitally to forward out if anybody asks for it. So from what I'm seeing on the $16,000 per week cost, that's at 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 168 hours in a week, that's approximately $95 per hour that were that it costs to run it? Or is that inclusive of pumps and things of that nature?
But that includes the pumps, the fuel.
So that's all in?
Uh, I would assume so.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So Commissioner Smith, you were kind of alluding to these questions as well. So if we wanted to kind of extend these days out, we could do it nonstop for 12 and a half days. That would pump to 300 plus gallon, or 300 million gallons? How much is it? No, 300 hours.
I'm sorry, I don't have the number right here.
370, okay. So then we could, if we're doing eight hours a day, it'd be 37 and a half days. So I think we can massage this a little bit, just to make sure that our residents are comfortable. I know obviously the goal is to do 24 hours, seven days a week. It's just if we have elders or children or people working from home, it can create difficulties. The other concern or question I had is if we're pumping too quickly, does it create any type of either erosion or any type of runoff issues of just the land kind of falling in if we're taking the pressure of the water away? Is that is that a concern at all, or we don't have that concern on any of these lakes?
Yeah, I don't think that's a huge concern, just because a lot of time, we're gonna discharge into, if if it's available, we're gonna discharge into a straight inlet that eventually leads into the lake. And also because we're using the same size pump everywhere, so the intake and outflow of the water is gonna be equal. So the flooding wise, it's not a huge concern, but we're gonna be monitoring the lake level regardless.
Absolutely. And so, well, the only one, I guess, that would be a concern that would be Border Lake, because there's nothing pumping into it, it's only being removed. So there could be some issues on that lake then.
What issue?
In reference to runoff or erosion, anything of that nature?
Pumping operations on these lakes are having many times before, I'm sure that.
And we haven't had issues?
No.
Okay. Next question I had, so we, during our agenda review, we had discussed pumping into Blue Lake, which would then leak into Lake Page, or excuse me, Page Lake. We discussed, I had concerns over if that water that would be pumped into that would percolate properly, get filtered through the earth, things like that, going to the aquifer. You said, yes, that's the way it's gonna do, and we'll kind of monitor it to make sure Page Lake doesn't go too high. From what Orange County is telling us, they're gonna pump directly into the drain well.
It's not going directly into the drainage well. We're gonna pump it directly into Blue Lake, and because Blue Lake.
Okay, so that's consistent.
That's, that's consistent. What's a little bit different from our previous briefing is that at the time, FDP has not give us the consent to allow the lake level at Page Lake to overwhelm the overwhelm the drainage well. But since then, they have gave us the consent to do that, which will quicken the operation itself.
Okay, and then you had said for, like, is it Page Lake or Lake Page?
Lake Page.
On Google Maps, it's saying Page Lake, just looking at two different maps here. Either way, you had said there's approximately six inches of of kind of clearance to be able to pump into that?
As of our latest data, there is about six inches clearance between top of Lake and the top of rim of the drainage well.
Oh, okay, I see. So to not overflow that. And so we don't have any concerns over overflowing Lake Page for any of the surrounding commercial properties, residential properties. We feel that that's adequate to take on the water that we're gonna be sending to it.
Yeah, there's, as as you can see right here, it's a 20 inch drainage well, which is capacity way outweighs what a six inch pump could do. So the amount of water you're, the the amount of flow rate you're intaking, the 20 inch drainage well could handle.
Worst case scenario, the drain well would.
Yes.
Secure properly, okay. On the Orange County side, thank you for that. On the Orange County side, I, we spoke about Lake Cortez and Border Lake, but we're not, are these completely, no, to Orange County staff, please. The the Lake Cortez is not, is it part of this conversation or is it not? Because it it on one presentation, it is part of this conversation. On your guys', it's not part of this conversation.
Uh, no, Lake Cortez is not part of the conversation. It's Border Lake bringing the water level down ahead of the hurricane season to provide, you know, that extra flood storage volume. So if we did have a big storm, you know, it would be contained within its watershed.
Gotcha. And and to confirm too, they're separate drainage basins. They're their own self-contained basins. Okay. Okay, understood on that. So I guess what, this is a presentation, but are we making official action tonight? Is that our goal, or what's our goal tonight?
No, I don't, I don't think we, I think we can, my thought is we would go ahead and start all the the processes. Orange County can do that without any funding. I want to bring it back as a business item at the next commission meeting, if if that's the the route we want to take as far as funding the project. So I I think that would be, I don't think we, it would slow anything down. Would that would that be a fair assessment, guys? If if we got two, in two weeks, we'll have another commission meeting, time we get permissions and and you guys, you know, we can work, you know, parallel on on the issues that 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 shouldn't be a problem. And I I I have to disagree with my friends from Orange County on on the responsibility. I don't think 1% is the right number. I think we we've proven that Lake Cortez is the, was the natural outfall. And so I think a a little closer split to 50/50 would be my preferred funding. But we will, you know, but like like Commissioner Smith, I don't want to get, let let the solution get in the way of the funding, so.
Well, and if I can ask a couple more questions too, sorry to interrupt here. So the, and so to go over the, it's $95, and now we're basically spending under $30,000 for the solution. If we look at this, so this isn't a make or break on any of our budget. So we can do this tomorrow and and make sure it's funded properly on the funding side.
How many dollars did you say?
$28,500 to do the short term. $95 per hour plus 370 times 370 hours.
I would go $16,000 a week.
Correct, so if you do it for.
Three weeks, so it's three times 60.
It's not three weeks.
20 days.
You're making up 20 days. It's 370 hours. It's 15, if yours is 370, it's 15 days. Which in my agenda review, it was 300 hours, not 370, so my math is a little off, but that's still not 20 days. And it's 28,000, let's call it 30,000. Let's call it 50,000. It's still protecting our residents and it's. So, yeah, I don't want to get bogged down on politics or whatever it may be. Let's just get it done and take care of our residents. The should, timing of our pumping, so because we get this, we get one shot to do this. Would it make sense to wait closer into rainy season before we get to hurricane season? So that it's kind of maxed out, we can max out how much we can pump? Is it a, or does it make sense to do it right now?
Yeah, so the consent from St. John's is that they want to pump it down to a level that matches the historical level of that month. So whether we're doing in March, we need to match the historical March elevation. Whether doing June, we need to match historical June elevation. And the pump, the the lake level fluctuates naturally, so I don't see a huge advantage or disadvantage.
One way or the other. And then on the long term solution, are we having to get that same emergency permit to be able to pump out to the Utility Inc. line?
Yes, yes. Anytime you want to pump l- lake water into a reclaim system, a permit is required.
So then because on this email that we, that Orange kind of provided to us, it says this is, they were very specific about kind of a one time use, like this is, and you're on this email as well, so I know you've seen it for sure. So they're they're very specific, it's a 90 day authorization, one time.
It's a one time to discharge into the drainage well at Lake Page. That's what the one time qualifies to.
So you feel confident that they would approve a permit ongoing annually or semiannually to be able to pump into Utility Inc. lines, or as much as we needed to?
I would say the proposed short term solution by Mayor, as far as being a pump station in, that will still be, not be a yearly thing. That will still be a short short time thing until the long term pipeline comes through. But I would say every agency that has been involved so far, uh, Orange County, St. John's, FDP, everyone's motivated to get this done, to get the lake level down. Everyone's aware of the problem. The problem has been there for years. So there's motivation on all sides to get this done. So there's reason to believe you will get permitted, but.
No guarantees.
No guarantees.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, let me, let me. Is it possible to do the short term solution, the temporary solution that the county has presented? And at the same time, go ahead and do the temporary solution connecting to Utility Inc.'s line? So we have both of those in place?
Yeah, there's nothing stopping us to accomplish that besides money.
The funding side is a little bit different.
Right, we want to do this tomorrow.
So how much it would cost us to treat the water that we're gonna send to our treatment plant?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
So how much is it gonna cost us to treat the water that we're sending to the plant?
Uh, I would need to get you the cost on that with my operation manager. I don't know the cost of that.
All right, but but I think it'd be a good idea if we did both in in the meantime. And and I like the idea that you mentioned earlier about if we connect to the Utility Inc. line to go ahead and pump down before the rainy season, that we were not competing with them when they need to use the line.
Yeah, if we pump down, pump it down before hurricane, that's the same time they want to do it too, so that's what the challenge is.
And to that, you know, the point is, we 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 need to still run the pipe from Border Lake to Utilities Inc. And so if we put a new pipe in, that pipe won't go to waste. We'll just disconnect from Utilities Inc., add the the third pipe and keep going. So it's not, the only only, really by having a portable pump in there, the only cost for us to do that, that that's that that we can't recover will be the the rental on the pump or or whatever pump we put there for that short term use. So it's not a, it's not a lot of waste of money at all.
Yeah, that's the 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 good thing, yeah, like Mayor was saying, the good thing about the plan is that there's very little waste as far as transition between the short term solution and long term solution, so.
Mr. Anderson, any?
Nope.
Good, good.
Just one more question.
Sure.
Because I did ask about the, I did inquire about the the 2.5 million grant. And then we don't actually have the grant.
It's pending, correct?
It's pending, and we we submitted for the grant.
Yes.
Okay, so I have Steven here, because he's actually working on the grant.
Okay.
Yes, so yeah, I'm, I am working on the great grant, and currently, it is in a pre-award process. So they have gone through the grant. We've submitted it to them probably about a year now, and it's been going back and forth. They overcall and ask for just clarification on something. I provide that for them, and then I wait until they ask something again, is 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 how the process is going back and forth.
So what stage are we at with this grant right now?
So what stage we're at with the grant right now is everything has been submitted to them. They go through, check the the pictures, any of the maps that we sent. They'll have some questions asked back. So again, as it, we're still in a pre-award phase. I reached out and spoke with them last week and just asked for an update, and so we're we're waiting to hear back from them.
Would you keep the commission updated?
Absolutely.
With the grant?
Of course, yes.
Who are we dealing with with the grant?
So we're we're dealing with the with the state, with the with the grant.
What department of the state?
The Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Or Emergency Management, sorry. There's the one for, I've I've been working on the two of them. So there's the one with the environmental protection, and the other one is through emergency management.
Are you working on other grants for us?
These are the the two that I'm doing right now.
Us, have you done any other grants for us?
I I have submitted one. It's not with the the project, but the water, I have submitted for one with Florida Forever. We're waiting to hear about that right now.
Okay, and the only reason for those questions is Dr. Chikinya Jackson usually runs our grant, so just curious as to why that's not happening.
Actually, throughout the city, there are several people that actually work on grants with us. So even like when Richard was here, he would work on grants. So we do work with the project managers when submitting a grant.
That's not what I asked. Dr. Chikinya Jackson usually is head. She she's the point of contact with the city, and then she works with departments. So is she still employed with the city?
Yes.
Why is she not doing grants as she's been doing it for years? Why is she not doing this?
The mayor, the mayor, can you, can you respond to that, mayor?
Well, I mean, so this wasn't your decision. Got it. This was your decision.
It's basically Chikinya, Dr. Chikinya Jackson does help in coordinate grants. I can't stand here and tell you that she does all the grants. Okay, it is throughout the city that some of the staff members submit the grants. We do have monthly meetings with them, and we do coordinate with them. But everything is not centralized through our department.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Steven, for the information.
Okay, well, I appreciate, we're we're, this is just for discuss, we're we're gonna bring this back next, next commission meeting. We'll have the present, for the next meeting, we'll we'll have it as a business item. We'd love to have you come back and talk at the business, as a business item. No, no, the city won't be made, but that that's the reason we'll bring it back in two weeks.
But wouldn't it be beneficial now to just hear from the residents so we get ahead of it and we're able to calm nerves for that meeting? Yes is the answer to that, but it's.
Do we have public comment on all of this presentation normally?
No.
While the residents are here tonight, why don't we give them an opportunity?
We we, they're here to listen to to our solutions, and so we want to come, we want to come back in two weeks, we'll we'll have, we'll have as a business item.
No, because that's a, that's a day meeting too. They're all here tonight. Let's give them the time to do it. Because maybe they don't need to come back then. Maybe they're comfortable with, and they get to show their concerns, and then they can watch it online and be happy with what we decided.
Absolutely, you'll have four minutes, absolutely, at the next meeting.
Right, ask us to come in the middle of the day and work.
Okay. No, no, I'm, let's just do, please, you guys are all here, please. Commissioner Nesta, you're not in charge of the meeting, so let's.
We work for the residents. I don't know who you work for. We work for the residents.
Thank you. So my first question would go to those who presented tonight. I'm, for, I'm with Wakiva Village, and so we were the ones who our ponds were, come, came up into our cul-de-sac, you showed some of our pictures. When you guys are talking about draining the Bear Lake and a couple other lakes, the ponds that are connected to our houses that overflowed, are you guys including our, those ponds in the ponds that you intend to drain, given the fact that our ponds are still far above their normal limits right now?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so in if, are, how long then, so how, right, so how do, how does pumping Bear Lake? If our ponds are far above.
Border Lake.
I'm sorry, Border Lake. So if our ponds are significantly above where they would normally be now, and we get the regular amount of rain, the regular amount of hurricane, we're gonna overflow because we are more than 50% above our normal limit. So how does this plan help us to not overflow even in a regular season? So how does this plan help us to not overflow even in a regular season? If you're not gonna pump us when, while you're pumping Border Lake and everybody else, um, how does that help us?
Any, any other questions?
Yeah, so happy to help. So the reason that, the, the reason why Wakava Village, w- western was flooded was a combination of multiple lakes overflowing. So normally Border Lake is not connected to Lake Ruden. Normally Lake Ruden is not connected to your well. Normally Lake Timon is not connected to yours. But all those lakes overflowed, overtopped onto the road, became all hydraulically connected. They all ran into the same drainage system which discharged to the retention pond next to you. So by drawing down those lakes, it's gonna prevent them from overtopping and into your system. So.
So then, if I'm understanding you correctly, regular normal, sorry, regular rainfall or rather a heavy Florida rainy season and a heavy Florida hurricane season will not cause our water to overflow unless there's a breach again. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Uh, there's no guarantee here. There's no certainty of what's gonna happen in the future. What type, like, how heavy a rain would it overtop? How heavy a rain will it, will it cause to the flood again? So each hurricane event is different as far as intensity and timing. So it's not just me standing here not giving you a guarantee. No one here can stand here, give you a guarantee. Anyone standing here that say, I guarantee you will not flood, do not trust that person. But I will say that, but what I can say is that if we're able to execute this plan and draw down Border Lake and along all the lakes along the way, it's gonna help greatly. So that well adjacent to you, um, and all the village, all the residents here, it flooded after Milton, which is probably the worst one so far because all the hurricane that's happened since seventeen, build up, build up, build up, all the lakes never got recovered. And you all came into one culminating event. So if we can, it's all chained event, if, if that makes sense.
I understand that, right. It's culminating. So I guess our concern is where prior to all of this, we start a rain season, hurricane season with a relatively dry, with two relatively dry ponds. And we are now walking into a rainy season with not just high levels, we're already over the overflow limits. So if we have over, not, right, so if we were on a regular season, we end up with three feet during this, during, during the storm season or during the rain season of water, we're okay. But if we get three feet of water now, that we are not gonna be okay. So if you're draining everybody else, why not drain us as well to give us that space that we don't have right now? Knowing that, that we are very close. Has anybody gone out there to see how close we are to flooding again?
Yeah, all of us have. Yeah, I'm sorry. So, so the reason that Border Lake has been a concern number one is because like I said before, it has been a well-known, uh, flooding place since the sixties. So we're taking care of the most severe places first. The well adjacent to you, as far as I know, in the last few years, Hurricane Milton was the first time it has happened. So with a limited amount of resource, we have to take care of the most urgent one first. Does that make sense? It's not that we're not worried about you guys at all. We're obviously sympathize with you guys hundred percent. But resources limited, uh, funding is limited. We need to take care of the most urgent one first, so.
Understood. So with that said, what, all about this is also about mitigating, right? Mitigating the, the damage that's occurring. Right? So in the event you guys are doing this and we're about, we've had a heavy hurricane sea, a heavy rain season, we're about to have the hurricane season. What types of, um, supplies or services or pre-hurricane help do you plan to give us to make sure that if the water, our water levels rise, they're not going, that water isn't gonna come into our, our homes? So for example, you guys posted that you guys had to put, uh, the Tiger Dams. And then you put, you put the Tiger Dams and then you guys had to pump the water from one side of the Tiger Dam to the other side of the Tiger Dam. That's the only reason why we were able to access our houses and get the water out of our houses. But I know that there are things that can be put up to keep the water from getting in our houses to begin with. So if our water level doesn't go down, what is the city, county, anybody ready to give us and put up as a preventative measure to make sure that we, our houses don't get breached and our yards don't get breached?
Yeah, that's a valid concern, but I would say that anytime a hundred-year hurricane event happens, to put it bluntly, the roads are supposed to get flooded. The cul-de-sacs are supposed to get flooded. Our infrastructure, other than our homes, none of it is designed to withstand a hundred-year events. So as far as I know, during Hurricane Milton, none of the homes, none of the water got inside the home, right? So it got up to the driveway, uh, it never got inside the homes. Now, the dams are very effective, but the Tiger Dam is not something that is feasible for either city or county to keep in their inventory at all times. It is difficult to install. And unless people are trained all the time, it's not easy to install either. If you remember, they got, took a couple of days for them to install it. So it's a very valid concern. Um, we could look into it, what type of equipment we can have on, to, to prevent that. But the Tiger Dam you do see is not something that, none of the municipality keep in their inventory at all times. So, but yeah, Becca was saying. What's a good, the good thing is that none of the homes got flooded, which is back to my civil engineering background, is the design intent of all infrastructures. So.
So that is true for my side of the house, for my side of the cul-de-sac. On the other side of the cul-de-sac, that water actually touched their homes and by the grace of God did not breach, but it was up to their homes and it was pretty high, that water was pretty high against their, their home. Nevertheless, I understand, um, what, I understand your point there. Um, my question then to the commissioners and to the mayor would be hearing the, hearing that they don't intend to do that, uh, flooding of our, and I get they don't, that we're not the high priority. What are the commissioners and, um, the mayor willing to do for us when a hurricane is coming? If our water isn't low, because I understand he's talking about a hundred-year wa, flood. But that is true when we are on regular levels in our pond. We are on severely irregular levels, which means we don't need a hundred-year, uh, storm to flood it. So what can you all promise to look into? And I get it, the Tiger Dams are extremely expensive. I don't expect that to be the answer. But I do know that there are other tools that are available that can be installed prior to a storm to make sure our houses are protected. I would remind, um, and I know that he says, you know, houses are meant to not get flooding, but I would remind you all, we are not a flood zone. Because we were never, we've never been flooded before. So I, and this is the first time that's happened. So to say simply, well, you're supposed to get flooded and we're not in a flood zone, doesn't really cut the muster there. So I would ask, you know, what are you guys willing to promise to us to do in order to protect our houses if we're not gonna get drained?
Okay, thank you. All right.
How much was the Tiger Dam when we did that?
It's free. State paid for.
There's a cost to it though.
No.
Well, it wouldn't be free if you're doing preventative.
What's the cost for that?
I don't know.
To rent it, to?
Don't know.
Okay. Let's find that out and see what that looks like for like emergency renting or to have those crews out there or something like that. Just see what that looks like. Because I think it worked. It was a, and the biggest issue is not just the flooding on the streets. It was, it was shutting down their power. And that's problematic. That is where it really came into play. They didn't have air conditioning in the middle of summer and things of that nature. So.
I, I wrote, uh, an email to do, to, about getting their transformers moved this week. So that's a little bit of help. Yeah, I'm following up with them. So stay with me on that because I was trying to help you with getting those transformers moved.
Yeah, that'd be beneficial, I think, just to keep the power at least, at the very least.
All right, okay. All right. Thanks, everybody for coming out. If you wanna hang around, we're, we're gonna go. Tell, why don't we just take a, let's take a five-minute break here and we'll, uh, we'll be back. Take five minutes, right back.
Okay.
We've got twelve consent agenda items. Anybody need to have him pulled? If not, look for motion to approve.
Real quick, before we jump into consent agenda, and this is for Attorney Shepherd, I got a couple of questions for you very briefly. The government and sunshine manual.
Yes, sir.
You've done a lot of classes in this, so.
Oh, yeah.
You know this left and right inward and outward. So twenty twenty five edition, it's created by the Florida Office of Attorney General. The question I have here, or more so statements, I just want to confirm I'm reading this correctly. It's about public comment itself. It says that members of the public should have an opportunity to be heard, but does not have to occur at the same meeting at which the board or commission takes official action if the opportunity occurs at a meeting that is during the decision making process and is within reasonable proximity time before the meeting at which the board or commission takes official action. All that to say, basically, for official actions or anything of that nature, we need to offer a public comment before we make that decision.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to say it happens a hundred percent of the time because I'm not, I'm not that good of a memory. But that's why each and every item that, for example, from come up from business on down, there's an open public period of comment enclosed before the decision is made, and that's what that's for.
Okay, understood. So I just want to make sure I was understanding that correctly. So if that's true, then, and it goes on to say exemptions to offer this are narrowly construed, whereas the sunshine law itself needs to be liberally construed. So limitations on public comments should be very, very specific and narrow. Offering the ability to speak on official actions and items should be liberally construed. We should be offering as long as it's within certain limitations decorum and that nature, correct?
Before decisions are made, so yes.
It doesn't have to be the same meeting, but just before a decision is made. Okay, so if that's true, then it goes into the fact that if we do not offer that and unknowingly violate the sunshine law, it's a non criminal infraction. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, that's a charging decision, but usually it would be a non criminal infraction. It's up to the state attorneys to figure that out.
Got you. And in this, in the, in the actual twenty twenty five manual itself, it states, it gives a difference between non criminal and criminal infractions. So non criminal, they basically go into a non knowing or unknowing of violating the sunshine law.
That's typically a consideration.
Okay, and so, and it goes into here and it says it's punishable by a fine not exceeding five hundred dollars. So that's non criminal. So then it goes into state a criminal penalty up to sixty days imprisonment and up to five hundred dollars if you knowingly and is a second degree misdemeanor if you knowingly violate the sunshine law, correct?
That's correct.
So with that being said, we've not allowed public comment prior to consent agenda items for twelve meetings so far. So I would take that as the majority of this board has committed non criminal infractions violating the sunshine law. Giving them the benefit of the doubt, they didn't know that they were violating the sunshine law. If we move forward with this thirteenth item and thirteenth time on not offering a public comment on consent agenda, this would then turn into criminal penalties.
Attorney, could you answer that question first in regards to, it was a question you asked first about, what was your?
I'll take care of it. Thank you.
Please don't be rude, Nick. Continue.
I'm not sure I'm listening to it. Exactly, agreed. So because we have not offered public comment before consent agenda and to be able to speak on consent agenda items, which are not administrative and not ministerial in its fashion, we're spending money on consent agenda, we're appointing people on consent agenda. Not offering public comment before that to be able to comment on consent agenda is a violation of the sunshine law.
It depends on the item. So within a consent agenda, I'll give you a perfect example. In Maitland, for example, they might have seven or eight items. And maybe only two of them are items where they would offer if anybody wants to make a public comment, to make a comment, and then maybe seven of the nine.
Are more administrative or administrative.
Correct. So it depends on the item, and without knowing exactly the item, you know, you'd have to, and I'll be happy to go through that with you, but that's the answer.
So we're releasing liens, execute release of code enforcement lien on properties.
That's not an issue for the public. That's a total discretion of the council.
So we're authorizing a piggyback contract for businesses spending thousands and thousands of dollars where.
You wouldn't ordinarily vote on those kinds of contracts either. So it does depend on the matter. There may be some, and I'm not saying there's not. I'm just telling you that.
It's not, I understand what you're saying. It's not perfectly intact, but there are items. And with the twelve that are on here tonight and however many are on all the other meetings, most likely we've missed one or two.
There could be, yeah. I mean, I don't know that, but, but that's, I would be happy to look through an example and, and, and give you an opinion once I saw it. But, but the reason why every city everywhere has consent agenda items, because many items are not something the public gets to weigh in on or has an opportunity. Pointments to board is a good example. So that's, you can, you can have a public period, or you can have a comment, but you're not required to.
Well, I think the perfect example is approval of minutes administrative. We don't need to have public comments on that unless there is some major issue, but even then there's not. So, but that's why approval of minutes and under consent agenda, they're a little bit different. But there are times that our residents do want to speak on things that they can't speak about and do not have the opportunity to speak about on items that, business items that we're taking care of. And I feel that piggyback contracts or contracts in general are material. And the public has a right to speak on that because they're tens of thousands of dollars, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I want to make sure that we're within the law here and we're not violating it. So I need your professional opinion and counsel to this board. If we move forward on this thirteenth one, now that we know what's in, in the law of the sunshine, are we violating it? Or would you counsel us and tell us that we need to be liberally construing the sunshine law and allowing residents to speak and provide their comments and participate in local government on the consent agenda?
I've looked through the twelve items that are listed on this consent agenda, and I don't see any on this consent agenda that would require public or where you'd have to open the for public comment. They are items one through nine is executing a release of code enforcement lien, which is completely discretionary. Item ten is authorize a piggyback contract, and I don't even want to guess how many of those I sign off on in between meetings because it's a lot.
I don't disagree, but I still think they're important. We're spending.
That's, that's, you can have a poke. You're asking me whether you're required. That's what I'm, I'm not telling you to not do it. I'm telling you it's whether it's required. The eleventh thing is accepted disbursement report. Again, that's a report that's provided to you to decide whether you want to accept it or not. And then the Apopka FY twenty twenty five budget to actual, essentially it's a report, I guess you're receiving. I don't know exactly what it is. But there's not a, not a, not a place for the city, for the people who are here to come and say, don't accept that report, or you shouldn't take, or it's not a thing. Can you open public comment on any of this stuff? Yeah, absolutely. You have that authority. I'm just answering whether you have to.
Well, and so in the document itself, it states that official action or proposition are not defined in the statute.
That's true.
So there's not a clear defined yes or no to this, and it can be go either way.
Well, as to what official action is, that's true. But as to what is an area that the public gets to weigh in on is pretty clear.
It states that in this?
Oh, no, I didn't say it stated it in that. I'm just, I'm just telling you, anytime you have a rezoning decision, anytime you have a comp plan decision or something where you're deciding to adopt or not adopt a ordinance. Those are the kinds of things typically get in, you get involved in. I don't know whether you've done this in the past because I've only been on the receiving end. But when you, when you make a big hire, like the city attorney, I know that the mayor appoints and then you all have to ratify. And I assume, but don't know, you may have had comment on those. I don't think it's required. It's a personnel decision, but could you? Yes. I've heard you have comment, for example, on discussions about hiring a fire chief. So I don't know what the past practice has been. Some of those things are required, the ones, like I said, the zoning and such as that. And some of those things aren't required, but you would typically or maybe have done it in the past anyway.
And again, the sunshine law said that it should be liberally construed. So if there's a question about it, we should be offering it.
Liberally construed to make sure that purposes are met in the meeting, and it's met when you have a notice meeting where minutes are kept, the public is admitted, and on the items that they are required to be able to speak on, they're allowed to speak. Yes. That's liberally construed every time.
But again, it's, it's up to interpretation, correct?
Well, on certain things, it's up to, actually the policies of the board. But yeah, it, could there be some issues that are close calls, and I would say to you, yeah, that you, you probably don't have a public comment just to be on the safe side. Yeah, because I can't predict everything that will be in front of you, but certainly I would be listening for those.
Well, I think it'd be valuable to go back to the twelve meetings that we have done this and have not provided a public comment and provide an opinion. Because I want to make sure that this board is within the law and just by looking at this, again, liberally applying the sunshine law. It doesn't seem that case, but again, from your professional opinion, I want to hear that from you to make sure that we're right.
If that's, if that's the desire of the, of the council, I'll happy to go back and look at the other consent agenda items. I just don't, those I don't remember. I can look at this one though.
Okay, thank you. And again, moving forward now, this is not unaware. We are aware that this could potentially be a violation, so it turns into a criminal offense. So that's up to the majority of this board if they would like to provide public comment on consent agenda items.
We don't even have to put them on consent. We can just get rid of consent and just make them all business items. I'm, I'm fine with that. If that makes you, makes you happy.
To provide opportunities for the public, absolutely.
Would anybody like to pull any of the twelve consent agenda items? Not a look for motion to approve the twelve consent agenda items?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, public hearing ordinance number three thousand ninety.
Ordinance number three thousand ninety. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four. The here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Nicholas D'Angelo's and Stephanie D'Angelo's. Located on the northwest corner of North Park Avenue and Burgess Street, comprising point six six acres, more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, separability, conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes? No changes. Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing for motion to approve or adopt ordinance number three thousand and ninety. So got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand ninety one.
Ordinance number three thousand ninety one. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from RSF one A residential, single family estate district to RSF one B residential, single family district large lot for certain real properties generally located at twenty two sixty Plymouth Sorento Road and twenty two forty four Sorento Avenue. Owned by Parmani Farms LLC and Macaulay George, comprising nine point five one acres, more or less, providing for separability, conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this one? Not to close the public hearing, look for motion to approve or adopt ordinance number three thousand ninety one.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance through number three thousand ninety two.
Ordinance number three thousand ninety two. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending chapter two, article eight of the code of ordinances expressly authorizing code enforcement to prosecute violators of the city's local business tax ordinance, providing for codification, separability, conflicts and an effective date.
No changes. No changes. Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this one? Not to close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and ninety two.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand ninety three.
Ordinance number three thousand ninety three. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county A one citrus rural district, county A two farmland rural district, city T transitional and residential, single family state RSF one A to KPI MU Kelly Park interchange mixed use with an assignment of a neighborhood overlay for certain real property generally located south of West Kelly Park Road and east of Chandler Road, owned by Kelly Park Road Property LLC, comprising of one hundred and seventeen point sixteen acres, more or less, providing for separability, conflicts and an effective date.
Bobby.
For the record, Bobby Howl Planning Manager.
That I did have a meeting with Mr. Jonathan Hughes and Luke Lasson, and it was to go over the development plan.
Okay, I, I as well.
Same here.
You too.
Okay, all right.
Bobby. For the record, Bobby Howl Planning Manager, the applicant's requesting a rezoning of one hundred and seventeen point one six acres to Kelly Park mixed use interchange with a neighborhood character zone overlay, properties located on the south side of West Kelly Park Road, specifically twenty three fifty West Kelly Park Road. The applicant is proposing the development of a property with a total three hundred and ninety two single family units at a density of three point three eight units per acre. The neighborhood character zone permits a maximum density of five dwelling units per acre. The design consists of front loaded and rear loaded lots. Lot width range from thirty four feet to sixty feet in width. There are no minimum and maximum lot sizes and living area requirements in the form based code area. Access to the site is proposed via West Kelly Park Road. The dedication of a thirty foot wide strip for future right of way needs for Kelly Park Road is detailed on the master plan. Within the strip, there is a twelve foot wide bicycle path that will be constructed by the developer to facilitate the regional trail system that is already existing within the Kelly Park form based code area. Roadway and pedestrian connections will be provided to allow cross access to the properties to the west and east at such time that they develop. According to the form based code, twenty percent of the site areas required to remain as open space, the applicant is providing thirty two point five nine percent of the site as open space. Common recreational elements include amenity and pocket park, the green space with internal trail system, passive open space recreation areas and the dedication of the bike trail along Kelly Park Road. Applicant is also dedicating fifteen foot wide strip and a fifty foot wide strip for future right of way needs for Chandler Road. Orange County Public Schools is indicated capacity is not available at the high school level and is deficient by twenty point eight eight one seats. The development review committee recommends approval. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. The recommended motion this evening is approval and accepting first reading of ordinance thirty ninety three and hold it over for a second reading and adoption. Myself and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Bobby? Okay, applicant, you want to just come and just give us a real brief overview, please, sir?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Hules with the Lowndes Law Firm, two fifteen North Yola Drive, Orlando, three two eight oh one. And as Bobby did a very good job of describing, this is the rezoning component of this project. This is actually the fifth public hearing we're having before you on the project. It started with some annexations of some of the assemblage parcels that make up the master property, and then it, we also went through the comprehensive plan amendment that assigned the overall property that's mixed use designation. And this is the next step to, to assign it to Kelly Park mixed use interchange zoning and adopt the master plan that was shown by Bobby. I could just refer back to that. What's, we actually started this process about a year ago, having a community meeting last March, and we showed a plan very much like this one to the, to those in attendance. It was heavily attended. But at that time, we, we almost exclusively received positive feedback on the plan, but from, from those that attended that live in the area, both in Oregon Estates and Oak Ridge. So we're proceeding with, with delivering what we showed at the very beginning, which is a plan very similar to this. And we're here before you on the first reading, looking forward to, moving forward with the remaindering of the development process. If it's the pleasure of this board to approve the rezoning, and there will be, you know, obviously more public hearings or public opportunities for comment review by this your board as, as we move forward with the, the details of a major development plan similar to this one. So myself, I'm available for questions. We have Luke Klassen also in, in attendance that, that can answer any engineering type of questions. But would, would just appreciate your support of the project and would like an opportunity if there is any public comments to address them.
Okay, any questions for either Luke or for Jonathan? All right, thank you. All right, anybody from the public wants to speak?
Rod Olson, thirty one fifty six Early Hills Lane, here in Apopka. Three hundred ninety two units equates to a hundred and twenty students, which again gets us back to talking about schools. I'm not going to run on as I did last time about schools, but we need to look at that because we enjoy overcrowding. It also leads to the aspect of the question regarding infrastructure and my memo to you with regard to moratorium. We have flooding across the community. It's not limited to just Border Lake. It's all across the community. We have water pressure issues related to the aspect of irrigation. To my cost, a six thousand dollars to replace my lawn. We've got Golden Gem Pond, which could run into millions of dollars, which all spells a lack of infrastructure, which all spells a lack of due diligence with regard to water drainage, environmental concerns related to our continued growth in this community. We're just asking you for smart growth. We're tired of just one rubber stamp after another building new, new homes. Thank you.
Anybody else from the community? Okay, all right. All right, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand and ninety three, first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez? Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand ninety seven.
Ordinance number three thousand ninety seven. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending chapter two administration, article four, finance, division two fees, section two dash one oh five special service charges, establishing a special service charge for outstanding lien searches. Authorizing assessment of special service charges by city departments, providing lien searches, providing for reserving of certain sections, providing for directions to the city clerk, providing for conflict, separability and an effective date. There are no changes.
No changes. Okay, any questions for Susan? Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this one? Not to close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand ninety seven.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Commissioner Nestor, why don't you get us started?
Mr. Mayor, you love starting with me, don't you? I think we want to start kind of around robin, get other people to start. I need to like to try to combat what I say, so that's fine. Let me see here. All right, first up, I have a reminder of my office hours for all my residents. They're every Thursday, eleven to one here at City Hall. It's been very successful. Come discuss any topic that you wish to discuss, good, bad, whatever it is. Whatever it is that we can do to make the city progress. I, I've received some concerns in reference to access to City Hall through ordinance thirty eighty one in that people are getting intimidated by that. They feel harassed and that it can be weaponized. So if you are feeling that way, I completely understand. I'm here to serve you and your concerns matter. So reach out to me. I will make accommodations otherwise and meet you where you'd like me to meet you. Going on to the charter itself, we, I believe we spoke about this last meeting and spoke about this many meetings. It's something that I know I brought up early twenty twenty four. And we've been talking about this for, for years now. I think we need to get a workshop on the agenda and probably two workshops in near successions because we got the emails from supervisor of election as well as city clerk Bone on February sixth in reference to the difference in costs between a male only election, which would be a hundred and eighty thousand or an in person election with two polling places, which is what we normally do for fifteen thousand. So substantial savings, and we've already budgeted for the in person polling places or election itself. So from that email, it stated, please note that their preferred timeline would be to hold the election mid July with a referendum in ballot language approved by May first. So we kind of have a timeline that we can work towards now at this point. Knock out a couple workshops, hear from the residents, adjust what we need to, and get this a referendum going for a budgeting that we already have. So I guess can we start looking at dates that we can get for workshops?
Well, let's, yeah, I'll start with one, whatever I am open, got some dates I'd like to look at for workshop for charter amendments. We can do it, let's, if we want to do it.
Let's do early March if we can.
I mean, is an hour, can we do it before seven o'clock meeting? Would that be in, in a? a month? Or do you want to do it sooner than that?
Let's do sooner than that. Let's do the twelfth. Like six P M?
For what date are you talking about?
March twelfth. It's a Wednesday, six P M.
Mr. Jeff. I know Wednesday night you're.
Well, I have a revival that week, so.
Okay, so.
I scheduled it around the city council.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm going to be on the twelfth.
Okay. Why don't we just do it the nineteenth of March, which do it?
Well, my concern is we have a second one. Will that give us enough time and and our attorney's team enough time? Because your team will be working, yeah, on the language for the charter, anything that we come up with.
Yeah, I mean, the right now, there's only one thing that I don't have the language for, and that's which election. But if something changes, then yeah, I would have to add it. But there's also the possibility that something will get taken away, so it won't be taken up.
Save some time.
Taking out's easy. Adding, I have to draft. And the only one I don't have drafted is which election, which day y'all want to go on the trap for the election.
So what type of timeline does your team need roughly?
Our timeline is is if you said do the election on March, it would be ready tomorrow. So my timeline's irrelevant. What's relevant is the supervisors to get it on the ballot. But one of the things that she told us, and I'm sure frankly candidly, to the consternation of her staff is we will accommodate Apopka. But she said that right here because I was listening. I'm going, boy, I've never heard that before. Usually they have very hard deadlines to get things on the ballot. I will reach out and try to find that hard deadline for you if you're talking about, you know, something that would come out in the summer or whatever.
In that email, and I'm not sure if you were on this, and you were on one of the emails, but it it said it the referendum in ballot language must be approved by May first to be provided to them for a mid July election.
Okay, so that's a hard deadline.
May first is our drop dead date. So as long as you're you're confident on that side on your timeline.
Unless you come up with something we haven't even discussed.
Sure.
Then that and but even then, I mean, I've done so many of these that I just need to know what you want to do, and I can draft the language. And so far, no one said your language stinks. I think I'll get it right. I just need to know what is it you want.
Understood. Okay, then yeah, let's do March nineteenth then. Thank you, Attorney Shepherd. For that works perfect.
Okay.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth will be before city council. So one of the things.
March nineteenth, the what time?
Six P M. So Rob, one of the things I want to try to do is is at least put together on our website just so people know what we're anticipating for the workshop, to know what we're going to be looking at to, you know, kind of narrow down what that the charter amendments will look like. So if we would be sure to, I'll get with you. We'll we'll try to get those. Yep, yep, okay. And so even if we just kind of we can we can throw out the whether we want to go to the December date for election and then everything else, we've already kind of got queued up. So we can get that on the website and talk if you want to come to the workshop on the nineteenth, you know, here are the issues. We're going to be looking for public input as to whether we want to put them on the on the on the charter. It for charter changes. So yeah, if we can do that, that'd be awesome.
Okay, perfect. And then last one I have, and again, just to follow up with Attorney Shepherd, if you can issue those opinions about our consent agenda items for all thirteen meetings that we've done that. And again, it's your opinion. I know it's not a steadfast thing, but your legal opinion on those, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for that. And that's it. Commissioner Smith?
I just would like if it's agreeable with the council. At last night, we talked about the historical society, and it was mentioned that we needed an ordinance in order to do that. And so I would like for staff to work on ordinance to establish a historic district.
Okay, all right.
Was it preservation or historical? I think it was preservation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so. Cliff, can you work on a historical designation ordinance?
I can, but I I fear that you are walking into waters that you probably want to know a little bit more about before you do.
Okay, so how about next commission meeting? Will you give us a?
Sure.
Perfect. How's that? Good?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Velasquez?
Okay. Boy, we've had a busy. Well, I just wanted because I know that Mr. Rod Olson, he comes up and he brings up the O C P S. And you know, I I believe you did. You were copied from our school representative, Melissa Byrd. And she is planning to come here with an update. She's actually working on some data. She's trying to get some data so she can come here. But she did send to you what she sent to me.
I don't agree with all of the numbers, but.
Well, that's. Right. I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I want to give her the opportunity also. Okay. That's that. Onsite has sent us each a, I guess, a kind of a and a report dated February seventh. But when I received the capital projects updated from both Mr. Deal Dad and Richard Erb, I don't think we've we've gotten more than half on that grant of switching from a better septic. What are we doing? And how long is that grant good for?
I mean, I know we've got some extensions. I don't Glenn's out. He's he's not doing good. I I know they're they're doing a I think they're going to do like a barbecue lunch and learn or whatever on the second.
Yes, this is second.
Second of March, second to kind of get more of the the homeowners engaged in in doing the conversion to the.
Right, because right now. The last report we have thirteen have been installed, seven new applicants have been processed, fifteen applicants under review. And the account for the grant is one million, one hundred and seventy eight dollars and seven hundred and thirty seven. But I'm curious as to how long can we keep extending this grant?
I will be to the extension date.
Only because this particular community is very sensitive. It literally sits on top of the Wakava Aqua Fund. Yeah, we're working under an extension right now, so I'll I'll get you the expiration date. I normally have my grant status report with me, but I didn't bring it tonight, so I apologize. Okay. Okay. And I know that. Is he still here? Yes, he is. I see him behind the screen there. I know Mr. Eric Mark will be presenting his adjourned public comments. So thank you for being patient. And that's that's pretty much it. I don't want to open up anymore.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you. So as everyone's aware, we have a Super Bowl champion, Jalen Carter, that graduated from Apopka High School. So we are have a celebration on, what is it, March eighth, between five and seven, a homecoming celebration. Ratley, do we have a location for that yet? For the celebration?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
I think it's going to be at the football field.
Okay. I'm so I'm not sure if we agreed to the football field.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We'll talk offline.
Yeah, okay.
I'll get you Ratley. Okay, so there will be a celebration somewhere in Apopka on March eighth. So we would like to invite everyone out. There's going to be a lot of celebrities. There're going to be a lot of different community leaders, different sports teams, Apopka High School, the Wakava High School, just a big celebration. So definitely come out, show some hometown love to Jalen Carter and we're excited that we actually have a Super Bowl champion. So that's all. Thank you.
You have a time?
Five to seven, March eighth.
All right, anything else? Okay, all right. Jacob, anything?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Cliff?
No, sir.
All right, Mayor's Report, only thing I've got is Thursday night, seven o'clock. Apopka is in the regional finals basketball. So if you like basketball, Apopka is playing really good. They beat Winter Park last week and they beat. But the beat Winter Park Monday last week, they beat a team. Golly, who would they beat? Anyway, both games, really exciting games. So they got a great basketball team. So come out and support them. That'll be Apopka High School, seven P M tomorrow night. All right, public comments?
Mayor, to confirm, you are instructing Rob Hibbler to turn off the live comments and feed to the agenda? Who we got, Susan?